Mr. Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Roll call. Provincial Vice Governor Clive de Quinio.
Here.
Board Member Mario Junior B. Adbarisi. Board Member Garap Frido A. Balanzar. Board Member Minerva Silcasinabi. Board Member Bobby J. Beeden-Lyon. Board Member Marlon Brando Beeden-Lyon. Board Member Armando Junior S. Evangelista. Board Member Jose Miguel S. Fortiz. Board Member Oliver Owen L. Garcia. Board Member Ria Luis Linas. Board Member Arby Es. Lieses. Board Member Holy Simon Santo. Board Member Eliser Is. Onahon. Board Member Joseph D. Palmada. Board Member Ranolfo Jose Junior G. Pipito. Absent. Mr. Chair, there are fourteen out of fifteen members of this august body were present. Inside the session hall, there is a quorum.
There being a quorum, the fifteenth regular session of the twenty-eighth SP is hereby in order. Majority floor leader is recognized. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon. Before we will proceed to the approval of the calendar of business, Mr. Chair, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Chairman, our former majority floor leader, and the gentleman from the second legislative district, the former board member, Mr. Chair, the honorable board member, Attorney June Beltran. He is with us, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome to our dashing debonair, former board member June Beltran, sir. Parry, welcome. Great to have you here with us. You will be busy later. Yes, go ahead, majority floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. We will now proceed to the approval of the calendar of business, and this also includes, Mr. Chairman, the approval of our previous, um, the, the, the approval of the minutes of the previous regular session, the minutes of the fourth regular session, Mr. Chairman, and for now, for the first reading, Mr. Chairman, we have forty-five items, and seventeen items for second reading, two items under unfinished business, eight items under the other communication, and in our addendum one, Honorable Presiding Officer, we have two items for the second reading. So moving for the approval of the calendar of business as presented, Mr. Chairman.
In a second, move the properly seconded. The motion is hereby approved.
As to the minutes of the fourth regular session of the twenty-eighth Sangguniang Panaluwigan held at the SP Session Hall, Malévale City, on September thirty, twenty twenty-five, copy this in, please, immediately in advance, Mr. Chairman, thus I move to dispense with the full reading of the minutes of our previous regular session, Mr. Chair.
In a second to the motion, any objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
I vote further for the approval of the minutes of our previous regular session, Mr. Chair.
In a second, objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to the first reading and reference to business, may we now recognize our secretary, Mr. Chairman, our secretary, Attorney Apollo Maguale, to read the first item during, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Attorney Maguale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. First reading, reference to business, item number one. Proposed Resolution Number zero six seven, the twenty twenty-five of the twenty-eighth SP, authored by Board Member Bobby J. S. De Lion, Second Legislative District, this province, entitled "A Resolution Expressing Full Support For The Accelerated Implementation Of The Support To Partialization Of Lands For Individual Titling Or Split Projects In The Province Of Bukitnun."
Majority floor?
Yes, Honorable. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of the following, Mr. Chair, item number one, two, and three. This will be transferred to the new business for the day, and this will mark as item number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. For item number four to eight, Mr. Chair, be referred to the Committee on Appropriation, Rules, And Privileges. Items number nine and ten, this will be referred to the Committee on Health and Rules And Privileges. For eleven and twelve, Mr. Chairman, this will be referred to the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, And Rules And Privileges. Item number thirteen, Mr. Chairman, this will be referred to the Committee on Poverty, Liberation, Social Reform, And Rules And Privileges. Item number fourteen, this will be referred to the Committee on Ways, Administration, Trade, And Industry, And Rules And Privileges. For item number fifteen, Mr. Chairman, this will be referred to the Committee on Youth And Sports Development, And Rules And Privileges. From items number sixteen to forty-four, Mr. Chairman, this will be transferred to the new business for the day, and this will be marked as items number twenty-one to forty-nine. For item number forty-five, Mr. Chairman, this will be referred to the Committee On Environmental Protection, Climate Change, Disaster Preparedness, And Rules And Privileges. In our addendum one, Mr. Chairman, for, from items number forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, this will be transferred to the new business for the day, and this will be marked as items number fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two. So moving for the approval, as enumerated, Mr. Chairman.
Objections, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, since we will now proceed to unfinished business, Mr. Chairman, since we have no item tabled in the privilege hour, and in our question hour, Mr. Chairman, since our visitor is still in, I think, in the Manul Fortiz.
Oh, okay.
Coming, Mr. Chair, so muraglay ulay opa sila.
Ah, so the questions are reserved for the...
Yeah, our visitor, Mr. Chairman, for the sisterhood coming from the province of Benguet.
Okay, okay. Let's proceed to the unfinished business?
Yes, we have only two items in the unfinished business, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, this is sponsored by our good vice-governor, Presiding Officer, and item number two by a gentleman coming from the second legislative district, the honorable board member, Attorney Holy Simon Santo. For item number one, Mr. Chairman, this is the proposed resolution authored if I...
Yes, please proceed. Please, please go ahead, majority floor.
This is authored by our provincial vice-governor, the honorable Vice Governor Clive de Quinio. A resolution entitled "A Resolution Injoining All The Fourth District Engineering Offices Of The Department Of Public Works And Highways, DPWH Operating Within The Province Of Bukitnun, To Submit The Comprehensive Status Reports On All Ongoing Infrastructure Projects, Including The Geotag Photographs With Timestamps Covering The Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-Five And All Prior Years With The Continuing Implementation." And this is authored by the provincial vice-governor, and authored by all the SP members. Whereas, section sixteen of Republic Acts Twenty One Sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of Nineteen Ninety-One, empowers every local government unit to exercise such powers as are essential to the promotion of the general welfare, including the authority to monitor, coordinate, and evaluate infrastructure development within the territorial jurisdiction. Whereas, section twenty-five to four, paragraph B of the same code expressly mandates that no infrastructure or community project within the territorial jurisdiction of any local government units shall be undertaken without informing the local chief executive and disakunian concerned, hereby underscoring the legal obligation of transparency, prior coordination, and the local oversight in the implementation of the national infrastructure projects. Whereas, Department Public Works And Highways, DPWH, through Department Order Number One Five Seven, Chairess of the Nineteen Ninety-Three, reaffirm the responsibility of its field offices to coordinate with the concerned LGUs prior to the implementation of infrastructure projects in adherence to the local government code. Whereas, notwithstanding the foregoing statutory and policy directives, repeated, and substantiated reports from the various local government units within the province of Bukitnun have revealed persistent lapses in coordination by certain DPWH district engineering offices, resulting in proliferation of infrastructure projects that are inadequately communicated to the local authorities. Whereas, such deficiencies have been associated with number of adverse outcomes, including the delay or incomplete implementation, questionable budget utilizations, and alleged use of substandard materials, all of which undermine the public trust, local development priorities, and the efficient delivery of public infrastructure. Whereas, therefore imperative to institutionalize, trigger compliance mechanism to ensure that all infrastructure projects initiated and/or implemented by the DPWHs within the province of Bukitnun are aligned with the local development plans and conform to the principle of participatory governance and are subject to appropriate legislative scrutiny. Whereas, to enhance the transparency about capability and project verification, it is further required that all status reports submitted by the concerned DPWH district engineering offices, including the geotag photographs bearing accurate timestamps, together with the submission or presentation of program awards to each program, implemented thereby enabling objective assessment and independent validation of projects progress. Therefore, be resolved, as it is served by the resolved, in session duly assembled resolution in joining all four district engineering offices of the Department Public Works And Highways operating within the province of Bukitnun to submit comprehensive status reports on all ongoing infrastructure projects, including the geotag photographs and timestamps covering the calendar year twenty twenty-five and all years within the continued implementation. Result further, that the capes of the resolution be furnished to all four district engineering offices in the province of Bukitnun through the respective district engineering and the immediate compliance. Result further, the capes of this resolution be furnished to DPWHs regional team through regional director, governor, and governor Rohel Yonel Perroqui for their information. Signed, the provincial vice-governor Clive de Quinio. For this matter, Mr. Chair, I move for the indulgence of the author, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move for the passage of this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Comment from the Honorable Garcia. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, with all due respect, if the situation of the politi... the political situation of the Philippines would have been different, I will be a willing co-author of this resolution. Uh, unfortunately, um, the timeliness of the passage to my mind, uh, will put us in direct, um, um, say accusing our respective congressmen of having some shenanigans. Now, we have explored this time and again in the city of Valencia when I was city councilor. The records will speak it out. Now, we don't have a district office then, in the fourth district of Bukitnun. Now, they are just two years old, or almost running into three years old, the district office, the youngest, uh, engineering district in the province of Bukitnun. In fairness to them, the new one, uh, since we have been banging on them, the regional office at the time, that they are not coordinating, I was told that this new engineering office is directly coordinating with the city government of Valencia. Now, um, I have my reservations because of the political implications this will have on this institution. Um, we all understand, no, that we come from different districts, we have different, uh, representatives that we support. Um, this will might, uh, might raise some, some conflict or irritants between us and respective congressmen. We know where this will lead. And finally, these same things were requested by the secretary of the DPWH. Uh, they have been, uh, tasked to submit all these things, uh, the ones that we are asking to the head office, including the ICI. Now, if we let them submit by through this resolution to this office, what shall we do? Read it? They have not been coordinating, as the, the resolution reads, it does... They have not been coordinating with the local government units. Maybe, uh, all the, the, as far, I don't know, as far as this unit is concerned, the provincial government of Bukitnun, as chair of the Committee on, uh, Engineering, they were there during the PDC, Provincial Development Council meeting, they were present. Um, they, they actively participated in the discussion. I don't know in the previous if they did that. So, I cannot, at this point in time, join the said resolution. So, I will respect the decision of the rest of the members of the, uh, Sangguniang Panaluwigan, but, uh, in fairness to my district, and in fairness to the, the DPWH that participated during the PDC, uh, I, I would, I would say that they are, they're, they've been, they were there and they participated. So, if it was in the past that they, they did not coordinate with the local chief executives, then let the local chief executives question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will answer your comment. Uh, it's funny that you mentioned, uh, that, uh, where this will lead to, and that this might affect our representatives in the respective districts. Uh, this resolution is not targeted towards coming up with our own investigation and our own conclusion. This actually is protecting our representatives, this resolution. And... Kung kaya himuon sa taga third engineering district, which they have submitted to me even before atong mayor pako, why is it that the other districts are not submitting? Diba? Then what? So, ang third district na lugar, uh, third engineering district na lugar ang transparent? Kaya, they've been giving us reports. Mayor pako sa una, until now, ang third engineering district ga submit og monthly accomplishment report nila. So how is it any different lugar sa uban ng mga district, kuwan? But, the intention, I understand, di, kuwan, ang concern ni Attorney Baba. But if you will look closely at the gist of the resolution, it is intended na ang ilang report, ilang mas i-refine nila. Because if you will, please, uh, show the, kuwan, the scan copy of the report. Now, this is a, uh, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five status of contracts, reports for stakeholders. All funding sources region implemented as of thirty September twenty twenty-five. Implementing office, Bukitnun Third District Engineering Office. Ang hatag sila ani, since, uh, when I was, uh, vice-governor, since twenty twenty-two. They've been very transparent, and then they've been giving reports. But I wonder why? Why is it that only the third engineering district is giving this kind of report? And when I look at the report, no, if you look at the report nila, sila ra, ang hatag sila. Wala sila, kuwan, wala sila gaya tago, diba? Ang third engineering district. And we're, we're very grateful for that. So, ang ato ang gaigapangayuon lang sa elaha, we're not, we're not saying ang mag-investigate na, no, no, no. We will not investigate. Ang ato ang napod nga ang uban mga distrito, at least nga pa kung pangatanon putas atong distrito, uy, kamusta nila mga project? Naputay ikasulti. That is the intention of this resolution. It is not to conduct our own, kuwan, investigation. Now, if you will look at the, kuwan, ilang report nila, oh, installation, application of road safety facilities, ano, blah, 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 kilometre, blah, 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 waga kita kabalu ko unsa pasabot, ano. So what we are only asking is that they've been doing it already, ang ato lang na to help our congressmen, na makadipinsa putas ato ang mga representatives who are kuwan, nakigaway para nga mapunduhan nila mga proyekto. Ang ato lang ga pangayuon na kung pwede, nagideclare man nila dari 37.18%. Diba? So, kung pwede napunta picture, makaatat sila ang picture, na timestamp, mura man na. That's all. That's all we are asking. No? So, that is actually the gist of the resolution, Attorney Baba. We're not saying that we will be conducting any investigation or like you're putting at risk the reputation and credibility of our representatives. That's all.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I thank you for making it clear that this is not intended for an investigation.
It is not.
If they have been submitting to you, your third engineering district, which covers Manolo and the rest of the first congressional district.
First district, yes, yes.
Well and good. However, Mr. Chair, if the intention of the good vice-governor is for them to submit, maybe the vice-governor can just write them a letter and tell them the first engineering district is submitting this matters to me. Why not the fourth engineering district or yeah, fourth engineering district also submit the projects, the first engineering district and the second? Now, Mr. Chair, I don't know. For the rest of the members of the Sangunian, it's difficult on my part to explain this to my congresswoman. So, I will still maintain, I understand, but I cannot be co-author of the said resolution.
Okay. Okay. Sige. Okay. So, let it be of record that for this resolution, which seeks for the other districts to submit, just like what the third district, third engineering district is doing for the past almost decade na nila hataagan eh. So, let that be of record that Honorable Garcia is withdrawing also his support to this resolution. Yes, Honorable Monsanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Leader. Also, I very much welcome this resolution, Mr. Chair, because presently, our district, second district, has been the subject of social media informations regarding alleged ghost project. And most of our barangay officials has been asking to me in particular, what did you do? Oo, unsa manin yoong mga ginapanghimuna amanday kinikaroon. I cannot say it there because I do not know what really transpired and what really happened.
Status, yeah.
Yes. But if we will be able to have this resolution and for the district to give us an update on what really the status of the project all about, then at least we can share also to our constituents, some of the questions they might be asking to us as far as implementations of the DPWHs project is concerned, Mr. Chair. So, without, as a backgrounder also, we have been telling the DPWHs this before. If I remember right, we have this.
Twenty-eight SP pa.
Yeah, twenty-seven SP.
Twenty-seven SP pa.
Yes, we have this resolution, resolution number 2025-6047, the twenty-seventh SP during the 141st regular session. They were here requesting a resolution so that we can endorse various projects under the GA at that time, fiscal year 2025. So, we approved as what they have requested, which is requirement for unconditional implementation. We cooperate with them, we help them, yet we require only for them to give us an update, status on those projects mentioned. This involves 2 billion more or less. So, maybe, I understand also the point of Board Member Garcia. He cannot easily tell the representative of the fourth district to do this. But if this will be a resolution, anyway, we are not mandating anybody. We're just expressing our desire and concern as far as this information is being requested, Mr. Chair. So, I for one, I will be supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Honorable Monsanto. Honorable Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, Mr. Chair, no? If you've mentioned that since year 2022, District One has been giving you the projects.
Status.
Status. How come we were not aware of it? No, the vice-governor has a copy. How come us, we don't have any of the list of the the projects?
Yes, it is on file. It is with the Sangunian Panalawigan Secretariat.
Yeah, but then if that was in resolution two, we could have known. Diba? Anong wala mina mahibalu nga na amanday. So, we were also wondering, how come?
It is with the Sangunian Panalawigan Secretariat. You can check it there.
Likewise, Mr. Chair, I stand with Attorney Baba, no? With that, probably I will withdraw my as being a co-author also.
Okay. So, let that also be of record that Honorable Alvarez is withdrawing his support to the resolution, the proposed resolution enjoining the, this is a, Miss Nomar, yeah, for district engineering to give comprehensive status reports of their projects.
Just an additional, anyway, the RDC is also giving the reports anyway. So, I don't have to pass any resolution.
I'm sorry, the RDC?
No, no, I mean the RDC, the first district, if I'm not mistaken. Kaya submit mo sila sa ato. So, I don't have to tell them that to submit because we've been submitting the...
Yes, but it is not just about the status report, but also asking them to send picture and timestamps, no? Because of their declaration of their accomplishments. Yes, go ahead, Majority Floor.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. I remember also we tried, Mr. Chair, that when I myself also, ako tong gihangyo tong DPWHs, all engineering district, Mr. Chair, to submit all their projects, so ang to girl, magapun sila kasubmit, Mr. Chairman. So, that's why by virtue of this resolution, probably during, because of this conditional implementation, Mr. Chairman, and this amounted more or less 1.9 billion.
Yes.
All projects in the entire province, Mr. Chair.
Yes, and actually, if I may, that was before even the controversy era, kuwan, wala pa, diba?
I remember the trend, Mr. Chair.
We already asked them for status reports, diba? Even before, even before. So, this is actually, we just want to set the record straight because every time that they, we are very thankful that they give us a report for status of contracts when they say, but we would like to know that when they declare 100%, pwede ba ta mangayon lang ta ang picture yatach sa ilang status report, diba? Picture at the same time, and timestamps dated and timestamps. Parang atis, mangutana ang kuwan, mangutana putas atong mga constituents, mangutana sa atong ka na distrito, diba? Mangutana support district nga, uy, kamusta na nila project nga, kuwan, ay, kuwan mo na, 100% na muna, na namagani picture.
Actually, Mr. Chair, inaniman eh, mubitong tonggabangayong tagistahan sa ilang mga projects, Mr. Chairman, because it was turnover to us, Mr. Chairman, regarding on the maintenance.
That's 1.9 billion of projects.
Because some of the projects, actually, they wanted it to be form part of our provincial road, Mr. Chairman. So, delete na siya as national highway. So, the turnover sa tuwa, after turnover, Mr. Chairman. So, we will take good care of all those maintenance na.
Correct.
So, that's why we wanted to have that list, Mr. Chairman. So, until now, wala pumagapun sila kasubmit. So, I see by virtue of this resolution, then they are...
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, take it.
Okay. Yes, Honorable Garcia.
I take exception to the statement of the Majority Floor leader. How can a national B project implemented on a provincial road? I, that was your statement, because before, when we asked for concreting of a provincial road, we declare it first that it is a, it can be a secondary highway.
Yes.
Before they can do the project study of that particular section, but not a provincial road concreted by the provincial, the national government and will maintain it. Because, because remember, we just approved the section from Baguntas to Lantapan, that's a provincial road. But because it was considered secondary highway, we turned over that 15 kilometers to the national government. It cannot be reversed. I mean, I have not seen a condition na kita, no? Siguro vertical projects, but roads, as long as it's already a secondary national highway, the authority comes, goes to the DPWHs. Every district has to maintain 100 kilometers to justify its existence. If they do not have 100 kilometers under their jurisdiction, they will be erased as a engineering district. So, there's no wisdom nga, it turnover nila sa local unya, mawala sa ilang poder. So, how can they justify their existence?
Actually, Mr. Chair, yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree with the...
Majority Floor, you elucidate.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman. That's why during, during katong, katong ipatawag sila dini. There are some projects, actually, the kininga portion is funded by digital ka na. Di napoy portion na yung nagconnect. So, it belongs to the provincial, kining provincial road. That's why muning, muning gusto galit nila nga, w, sa'on man na to ni. So, they wanted it nga kuno, i-turnover nila sa provincial gabit. Puting dakua gika ni. Dakha ni mga projects, actually, ilang ipangopen. That's why ako ginatapos, sige, taga imik listing sa mga projects. That's why, gi, gi, amo sila ngay na ni, sige, submit to us all the listing kay atong tanawon. Kay because, delete man apwede, Mr. Chair. Nagdelete na to sa pasanong resolution. Actually, there are some projects nga wala panato gani na identify as secondary national highway. Naan na, nasbinto na ang uwan, na portion.
Some were bided out, some were for implementation, some were already implemented.
Regarding sa katong mga poste, poste, kanal, nagdelete pa nila mga kuwan, delete pa nila ma, ma, ma transfer ng poste. Sumutu ya kung gi-inquire, Mr. Chair, na ko w, sa' sa'on man na to ng uban poste din na karoon. And from sa lawagan, Mr. Chairman, going sa somewhere in Gamot, dakha pakidinah ng mga areas, ka na ang poste. Na, na portion din na, Mr. Chair, na provincial, na, 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 some certain projects nga kini gi, gi siminto by virtue of the funded coming from the provincial government. For example, dini sa barangay Larohas, ah, Dagumbaan, na portion din na, nagi-turnover ni, na, na to dini sa provincial government. But on the upstream, Mr. Chairman, it was funded by the national government. Naan na ang mga areas, Mr. Chairman. That's why ako ginanag di taga DPWHs submit to us all your listing sa projects, kitanaw na to, sa'on na to ni karoon pertaining to the maintenance of those kining mga road projects, Mr. Chair.
Precisely. Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Given the Larohas to Dagumbaan section, that's an old, that's a provincial road, Mr. Chair. And that provincial road was developed, concrete, kami man siguro nagaproba na pagconcrete na ng kuwan, ka na ng section. Then, there was an alignment after the fourth district was created. So, they made some alignment kay para makonek ang dalan direkta sa Valencia to Pangantukan. So, that's why they opened some, some roads dito sa ibabaw, motong na concrete na, okay? So, karoon, Mr. Chair, it remains that section nga iya sa province, iya sa province, kay kita may nagasto.
Yes.
Dito sa taas nga, opening of national, secondary national highway nga gi-sugdan na, gi-open ang road, bago na kalsada, delete na existing, iya na sa, iya na sa national government, okay? So, wala man siguro'y conflict din ha. Because as far as they are concerned, ilato tong ila, ato, ato na, nagsumpay lang. Kay, at the time, at the time, nauna magod ang mga provincial roads. So, it would not be correct also to say nga, it turnover sa ato for maintenance. Hey, if you look at, if you look at that section karoon sa national highway dito, oh, may maintenance. Dakha magayoh, tagasa kayo ang sagbut sa kilid, simintado to dya. Because wala pa man siguro sila maintenance budget dito sa section nga, wa pasad na human. Kena pa may dua, dua man ata ka bridge ang wala na, na human dito. So, again, again, I just cannot agree, no? Na a provincial, a national road budgeted at that will be turned over to the provincial government for maintenance.
Um, there was a term used, what was that? Conditional, conditional, conditional implementation, yeah, of the 1.9 billion projects, which they said was, I don't know, was it an insertion? Diba? It was not in the GA and they admitted in DPWH that it was an insertion. Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I may be allowed to read this resolution, Mr. Chairman. This is actually, Mr. Chairman, a letter coming from the provincial governor. This is dated April 16, 2025. Honorable Vice-Governor Clive De Quinho, honorable members Sangunian Panalawigan of this province, through Secretary to the Sangunian Attorney Apollo Magwali, your honors. This pertains to the request of the Department of Public Works and Highways, Region 10, for the issuance of resolution for the following projects of the General Appropriation Act for fiscal year 2025, which have been classified as conditional implementation. In view thereof, the undersigned respectfully request this August 24th and 1st resolution, which is crucial prerequisite to the release of the necessary funding for the said project as per requirement set for implementation to it, Mr. Chair. This is amounted to 1.9 billion, Mr. Chairman, ha?
And spread all over the province, diba? Delete man na ingon nga certain...
But our resolution, Mr. Chairman, endorsing ha, by virtue of resolution number 2025-6047 of the 27th SP during the 141st regular session, Mr. Chair, a resolution endorsing the various projects under the General Appropriation Act for fiscal year 2025, which has been classified as conditional implementation.
Yeah, that was the first time I heard of a, kuwan, maybe the Honorable Garcia can elucidate.
Mr. Chair, conditional implementation is actually a between a regular implementation and for late implementation or late release and implementation in Congress. Now, kanasiguro, nasiguro'y nag, nusan eh, istorya nga, delete na tagaan ng Bukinon, delete na i-release for political reasons, so gi FLR na. Now, kita gaantag, kina GA man, very clear man ang statement nga GA. So, inana maguna dito, approve na, unya, or release na, notan na dito sa Presidente FLR for late release. Okay? So, aron maparilis ni mo, na 'yung mga conditions. So, basi gi lobby sa regional office nga marilis na ning, wala, 1.9 billion pesos of various, various projects in that other province. So, siguro, because the governor pushing them nga, karoon na inana man, karoon na inana man. So, that's, that's what happened and the request nga, resolution na sa Sangunian para mapadali. I don't know if it was approved. See? That's why, that's why if these projects were released actually and implemented, there was a resolution, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. And, Mr. Chairman, during this time, that's why we invited all those district engineers.
Exactly.
District.
From the region?
Yes.
In fact, na taga region.
And all over the district engineering office of the province of Bukinon nga, niingon de ko sila ka, sige, submit to us all your kining list projects. Oh, yeah, listed projects here. Kena may uban bito ano eh, ongoing, na uban nga Phase 1, Phase 6. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know kung implementer.
Yeah, but, but there was a comment from all of the engineers that some of them have already been bided.
Yeah.
Diba?
And actually, and actually, Mr. Chairman, during this time, the question, or, Mr. Chair, they promised to us to submit all those listings.
Correct.
I will just answer facts, Mr. Chair.
Yes, 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 yes.
Not that, because I was not privy to that discussion here in the Sangunian. Yes, Mr. Chair, tinood na, naanay nabid. Nabid na. Pero, kuw FLR man, delete ma NTP. Wala notice to proceed. So, nabid na ni mo, wala mo na, pero, wala. You just wait. Because na FLR man. So, pag mag FLR ang office of the president, wala, di kaliho kang DBM.
So, is it possible that these were given NTPs?
I don't know really, Mr. Chair, also. Katong, kung gitong kisulti sa engineer dari nga nabid na nila, unya, waman takabalon sa ita liato, kay sila raman ang gabit. So, it's possible nga, wala may issueyog NTPs. Nabid, pero wala may issueyog NTP. Okay?
So...
Naaward perhaps, pero wala may issueyog NTP.
So, that is precisely the reason, Honorable Garcia, that we are asking also for this status.
I did not know. Because in the resolution, it was never mentioned that there was this previous resolution. So, ako, I thank you to Honorable Monsanto for sharing it. I did not know about it. I was not a member of the 27th SP. So, I am not aware. Now, on my own personal experiences in the city, kapilaan sa damon ni sila gipokpok. But again, we were not talking to our district, kay wak pa man may, the fourth engineering district. Now, when they were created, in fairness to them, no? Anang bago nga, to two-year-old or almost three-year-old DPWH engineers, ga submit pun sila.
Yeah, good. That's good.
So, muna nga, kung wala ka submit si first engineering district, which is the second legislative engineering district, na raont ang opisina niha.
Correct.
O katong second engineering district nga, tuwa ilang majority floor leader sa third, then we really do not know. But then again, ako lang, Mr. Chair, I understand where the two gentlemen are coming from, including you, because of that decision in the last 27th SP decision. So, it's just correct on your part to ask, to demand. So, it's just correct on your part to ask, to demand, ah, nga, na-implement ba to, unsa may, what, what's the effect of that resolution?
Correct.
Was it, was that conditional, ah, implementation really implemented, or it was just left hanging in the air?
That's why I implore you to join us in this resolution, do not withdraw your support. Because it is not an investigation, this is just asking them for, ah, for clarification.
I will just be, ah, in the middle of all these things, I understand where.
So you will abstain?
No, I will, I will just not, I will just abstain.
Okay, you will abstain. Habat di Honorable Albarisi, hearing all this, ah, one.
As I've mentioned earlier, Mr. Chair, kahat, ka-submit man ang first district, so no need for me.
Ah, third, third engineering district.
So I don't want to mingle with the other districts anymore.
Ah, okay, so, balat na sila, okay. Sige. So, are you objecting or abstaining? Abstaining. Yes, Honorable, ah, Pipito, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ah, ako pun. Nakapangtanan.
Ah, okay, yes, go ahead.
Ah, Mr. Chair, nakapangtanan regarding sa resolution, ya pun. What if, ah, after sa resolution, delete ya pun mo hatag, ah, what will be, what will happen next?
What, what the, what the problema? Then let the pa- let the public be the better judge. Let the public be the better judge, ngano nga, di sila, are they hiding something? Ngano, di man sila nga hatag, one, why is it nga third engineering district nga hatag man, sa mga mayors nga hatag sila, diba?
Ah, mulat ako, Mr. Chair, kay basino nga ng, ah, example, di man sa siguro. Ah, ako alam pangatpas, Mr. Chair, is, ah, if delete sila 'yung hatag, ah, basi maya nga ng well, ongoing investigation karoon sa national, sa, aning mga cases sa DPWH. Basig dery sa local, maka-steer, puno nga ng, mga, usik na na mga conflicts. Kito god, ah, wala ako, Mr. Chair, delete ko, kumbaga din ako gusto dumagan o, ah, kalayo, o gasulina ang kalayo, kumbaga.
Actually, what we are just asking them is to be transparent, and then, like they say, for example, this is actually procedural more than, kano, kay, ang ato alangga kwaneris, ang ilang gaya hatag dery, is contract description. Coming from a layman, nga delete technical, dita kasabutan ni ilang gaya butang dery. Ang ato araman, the, the intention of the resolution is for them to attach pictures and timestamps, and that's it. That's what we are asking. And then, kung wala pa sa la ka-hatag, kung sugod, o, one, status report, why is it that the third engineering district is giving, diba? So wala sila gaya tago, diba? We're not saying nga lang sila gaya tago, but, ang ato ba, it, it sends, ah, one, ah, you know, a bad picture. Ngano, di sila mo hatag nga, ang third, ang third engineering district nga hatag man, duga na nga nga hatag. And that's what we are asking, kay, at least ka mo, kung pangataon pun mo sa indistrito, ato is, maka-ato dito sa, ang sa basa, ah, ah, one of your barangays sa sugod, nga uy, kamusta ang atong kwaneris, kanang eskwelahan nga gitukod. So at least nga, ah, hundred percent na na siya, pro Phase 1 pa. Latay, na pa mag-request patay, ma-maglabi pa mi, kang Congresswoman na pandingan, wala intensyon, that is the intention.
Pero, ah, sakto, Mr. Chair, anyway, ah, sa tong gusto isa. Kay, before, nila pangtanan, puno sila before, niya.
Correct.
Morang faluap, kumbaga na siya.
Yes, 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 so this is just a faluap.
Oh, yeah, muna, muna ako ginaklaan ako, Mr. Chair, kay basino nga ng, mo lagay. Niya, pwede ba na to, pun, Mr. Chair, ako, ah, ato, one lang nga, pwede pun baka, if ever di sila mo submit, pwede ba na to, baka pa nga, ma-request atong mga LGUs, nga mga engineering office nila nga, baka, kumbaga, inventory, ma, pwede ba na, Mr. Chair? If ever, if ever lang niha nga, morang delivery sila mo submit, pwede ba na to, ma-makuha, ilang pinagis atong mga LGUs?
Actually, ah, actually, it is kong ginasya. Ah, having attended, being a former mayor, and then having attended, ah, mayor's meetings also, LMP, actually, mo gina ang mga requests sa mga mayors nga, tagaan sila og status, unya dayon. As mentioned in the Local Government Code, nga before gitunta, mang sugod o project, ma-coordinate kids sa mga mayors. But sometimes, motto na lang na sila sa mga mayors, pag pebalo, mayor, problema may sa road right of way, tabangi may be. Ano na lang, sumiyo na mayor, ha? Nada may project, ha? Ano, man man ko coordinate sa moa, adi, wala, so koko na pos, mayor pulling, so koko na po si, talaan ng mga mayors dito, diba? So, at least lugar, makatabang taba, o, one, monitor sa ilahan, na makatubag buta, every time pangutan unta. Unya din, kung inon sila karoon, nga mo declare sila nga, uy, hundred percent na na, ah, sige, bitaan na mo sa inyong give, attach din yung picture, hundred percent bagyan. Kay, kung talaw nga Phase 1 pa dini, maglabi may sa mong Congresswoman, Congressman, o, sari, diba? Wala dya, ang ato intensyon, aning resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pipito.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, Honorable, ah, kasinabi?
May behalf, may nga pun sa tanan, thank you. Ah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to appreciate the Vice Governor for, ah, proposing this, ah, resolución, no? So, in fact, the purpose of this is to appraise us, the provincial government, the ongoing and the projects, no, sa atong mga respective nga districts, no? So, for the good of our people, tama, tama kayo si Board Member Monsanto. However, your honor, naalang kui gamay, no, ah, komentario sa, I think, number four paragraphs over us, no? Regarding katung, ang DPWH, morang delete mo agi sa mayor, manangin sa mayor, I will speak in behalf of the third district, no? Kay, so far sa amo, sa third district, kugihan manggitgay ng mga mayors, halos mang sapun me dito sa third district. And in fact, before they implement the project, our congressman has, ah, consultation with all the barangays and the LGUs nga ihatag ng mga proyekto. Nakita na ako sa third district, I mean, sa third district nga DPWH Ckan Engineering District, morang, mayo man ang implementasyon sa mga proyekto. Yes, na'y ongoing, na if, ah, nahuman na ang project, willing pack, Board Member Palmada, Board Member Fortiche, gaoban me in every turnover sa project. So, morang diha lang kumabikil gamay sa, kanang, sa ganit na diha bi. Kanang, ah, where us, number four ba na?
Yes. So instead of persistent, you'd only like to have it worded, um, have revealed some lapses, not only, not persistent.
Yes.
Okay, 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 okay. You want to soften it, you want to soften it?
Para sa ako, harsh ba?
Yes, because it's not applicable.
Mokontradi konya na sa among Congresswoman nga, uy, ano yin yani?
Yes, 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 yeah, I understand, I understand, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I am, I am willing to have it rephrased also.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So instead of persistent, some lapses, ah, okay, okay, okay. Okay, so, is there no other comments? Yes, Majority Floor?
So, again, Mr. Chairman, so moving for this passage of resolution, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Second, we do, ah, with two abstentions from Board Member Garcia and Board Member Albarasi. Motion approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presenting Officer, proceeding to item number two, may we now recognize the gentleman coming from the second district, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, Julio Monsanto, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Monsanto is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Ah, one of the unfinished business is a letter dated September 17, 2025, with attachment capping, coming from the Provincial Budget Officer, Provincial Budget Office of Bukidnon, which transmitted to this August body for appropriate action. The supplemental budget number one, general fund and special account, local economic enterprises calendar year 2025 of the municipality of Somila, Bukidnon, in the amount of 29,772,762.82 pesos. Attached to the said communications or budget documents and technical review analysis for reference and perusal. The Committee on Appropriations and Unrules and Privileges, after going over the same, finds the said supplemental budget to be proper and in order, and hereby recommend for each approval, subject to the existing budgeting, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. So moving for the approval of the same, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Monsanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, proceeding to the second reading. Okay, so proceeding to the second reading, Mr. Chair, for item number one to ten.
Before that, Mr. Chair, we would like to recognize on record the presence of.
Honorable Board Member Doc RJ Pipito, Mr. Chairman.
That makes us perfect attendant.
Perfect attendance. With perfect discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for item number ten, by Honorable Board Member Pipito, 11 to 12, Honorable Board Member Elises, 13 to 16, the Honorable Board Member Ato, Attorney Owen Baba Garcia, for 17, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board Member Elisa Onahon, for item number one to ten, Mr. Chair, may we now recognize the Honorable Board Member Doc RJ Pipito.
The Honorable Pipito is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is Joint Committee Report on Committees on Civil Service and on Rules and Privileges. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an omnibus motion for the approval of items number one to three. Item number one is ordinance number 1282 dash 2025, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Damulub, Bukidnon, entitled Amending Ordinance Number 1273 dash 2025, entitled an ordinance classifying emergency hired employees and local paid teachers under contract of service to job order status in the local government unit of Damulub. Item number two is ordinance number 25 dash six, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Libuna, Bukidnon, entitled, entitled an ordinance establishing the office for the Senior Citizens Affairs, or OSC, in the municipality of Libuna, Bukidnon, as mandated under the Public Act 9994 and the Grant of Honorarium to the appointed OSC head. And item number three is, um, ordinance number 003, Series 2025, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Pangantukan, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance amending the position titles of the heads of offices, office, and the assistant municipal treasurer by respectively adding the municipal government department head one and municipal government assistant department head one in their position titles in conformity to DBM Local Budget Circular Number 137, Series of 2021, and CSC Memorandum Circular Number 12, Series of 2022. So moving for the omnibus motion, Mr. Chair, for the approval of these three items.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Another omnibus motion, Mr. Chair, for items number four to seven. Item number four is, ah, ordinance number 09 dash 2025, Series of 2025, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Kabanglasan, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance amending ordinance number 04 dash 2024, entitled an ordinance adapting the revised organizational structure and staffing pattern of the local government unit of Kabanglasan, Bukidnon, creating new plantilla positions with the corresponding qualifications, duties, and functions, and appropriating funds, their funds for a purpose in compliance with the recommendations provided by the Sanggunian Panaluwigan of the province of Bukidnon. Item number five is Executive Order Number 002, Series 2025, from the office of the municipal mayor of Kitauta, Bukidnon, entitled an executive order designating the municipal stats, municipal statistician of the municipal municipality of Kitauta, Bukidnon. Item number six is Executive Order Number 04, Series 2025, from the Sanggunian, ah, from the municipal office of the municipal mayor of Kitauta, Bukidnon, entitled the order reconstituting the Human Resource Merit Promotion and Selection Board. And item number seven is ordinance number 002, Series 2025, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Pangantukan, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance amending the position titles of Private Secretary 2 and Driver 2 in the municipal mayor's office by changing them into Senior Administrative Assistant 3, Private Secretary 2 and Administrative Aid 4 Driver 2 in conformity with Auto DBM Local Budget Circular Number 137, Series of 2021, and CSC Memorandum Circular Number 12, Series of 2022. Ah, so moving for the omnibus motion of these four items, Mr. Chair, to be referred back ah, to its origin for the compliance of the stated findings. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is, ah, this is Joint Committee Report from the Committees on Health and Rules and Privileges, to which is referred, ordinance number 25 dash seven, approved on August 29, 2025, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Libuna, province of Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance expanding the provision of drugs and medicines and home-based services for indigent persons with disabilities and, ah, senior citizens in the municipality of Libuna, Bukidnon, and appropriating funds therefore. The ordinance seeks to expand the provision of drug, provision of drugs, medicines, and home-based services in the, for indigent persons with disabilities and senior citizens within the municipality of Libuna, Bukidnon. The committee recognized that the ordinance is anchored to, ah, on Article 2, Section 12 of the 1987 Philippine Constitution, which states that the state shall protect and promote the rights to health, the right to health, instill health consciousness, and adopt an integrated and comprehensive approach to health and de- health development. It emphasizes making essential health services available to all at affordable costs, prioritizing the needs of the underprivileged, and ensuring access to free medical care for the poor. Mr. Chair, thus the committees, ah, after, ah, hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number 25 dash seven, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Libuna, province of Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sanggunian Bayan concerned to pass. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Next item, still on joint committee, still on the Joint Committee Report on the Committees on Health and Rules and Privileges, to which is referred, ordinance number 2025 dash 2231, ah, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance enhancing the registration, accreditation, and support system for barangay health workers in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, the committee recognizes that the ordinance was anchored on Republic Act 7883, entitled an act granting benefits and incentives to accredited barangay health workers and for other purposes, which recognizes and supports the vital role of BSWs by providing them with the benefits and incentives for their community health services. Key provinces include granting civil service eligibility for eligible BSWs, offering training and educational opportunities, providing free legal services for cases arising from their duties, and giving them preference in health personnel hiring. The act aims to promote public health by empowering communities through health education and ensuring access to primary healthcare services delivered by the BSWs. Ah, recommendation, the committee is hereby recommend for the approval of ordinance number 2025 dash 2231, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sanggunian Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Item number 10 is ordinance number 22, 2025 dash 2235, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance establishing the local rabies prevention and control program in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, and for other purposes. The ordinance seeks to establish local rabies prevention and control program to promote, ah, promote responsible pet ownership among the public and to prevent and control the spread of rabies in the municipality of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, pursuant to Republic Act Number 9482, otherwise known as the Anti-Rabies Act of 2007, and the directives of the Department of the Interior and Local Government through Memorandum Circular Number 2011 dash 30, and Memorandum Circular Number 2014 dash 56. All local government units are mandated to implement a comprehensive, comprehensive rabies prevention, prevention and control program. After careful review, the committee finds that the ordinance aligns with the provisions of Republic Act Number 89482 and reinforces national initiatives on rabies eradication and provides a clear framework for rabies prevention and control at the local level. Thus, the committee is hereby recommend for the approval, ordinance number 2025 dash 2235, from the Sanggunian Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sanggunian concerned to pass. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pipito.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, proceeding to item number 11 to 12, may we now recognize, Mr. Chairman, our IP, Mark, the Honorable Board Member Attorney, RB Elises.
The Honorable, Dato, RB Elises is recognized, go ahead, Dato.
Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Indigenous Cultural Communities, ICC, Indigenous People, IP, and on Rules and Privileges, Number 2025 dash IP 006, Number 2025 dash R 250, Mr. Chair. The Committees on ICC, IP, and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred, ordinance number 2025 dash 121, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sanggunian Bayan of Impasugong, Bukidnon, entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the official tribal emblem in the tribal capital of Bukidnon, municipality of Impasugong, Bukidnon. Have considered the same, and hereby submit its findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, comments, the municipality of Impasugong has long been recognized as the tribal capital of Bukidnon, home to the Higaonon tribe and the Bukidnon Tagulwanon tribe, whose tradition. whose traditions, beliefs, and cultural heritage form an integral part of Bukinon's identity. As outlined in Section 29 of RA 8371, the state shall respect, recognize, and protect the right of the ICC's IPs to preserve and protect their culture, traditions, and institutions. It shall consider these rights in the formulation of national plans and policies. The ordinance complements with Article II, Section 22, recognition and promotion of the rights of the ICC's IPs, and Article 12, Section 5, protection of cultural communities of the 1987 Philippine Constitution and the General Welfare Clause and the authority of LGOs to promote cultural heritage and the development as provided by the Local Government Code of 1991. Recommendations, the committees after careful study and review hereby recommend for the approval of Ordinance number 2025-121, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Impasugong, Bukinon, for being proper in order and within the competence of the Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Item number 12, Joint Committee Report of the ICC, IP, and on Rules and Privileges, number 2025-IP-007, number 2025-RR251, Mr. Chair, the Committees on ICC, IP, and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Ordinance number 2025-2236, approved on September 8 of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon. An ordinance prescribing guidelines for the respectful use of the ethnic attire and accessories in the municipality of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, and imposing penalties for violations thereof. Findings, comments, the committees found that the ordinance is in accordance with the provision set forth in the 1987 Constitution, particularly as articulated in Article 14, Section 17, which mandates that the state shall recognize, respect, and protect the rights of the ICC to preserve and develop their cultures, traditions, and institutions. Moreover, this ordinance is consistent with RA 8371, under Section 29. The state shall respect, recognize, promote, and protect the right of the ICC IPs to preserve and protect their culture, traditions, and institutions. It shall consider these rights in the formulation and application of national plans and policies. The committees found that the ordinance aims to strengthen the community's awareness and discipline, particularly during festivals, tourism events, and educational activities, and to ensure that the use of ethnic attire and accessories is done with respect to customs and traditions of the IPs, avoid misuse or misrepresentation, honors the cultural integrity of the ICC IPs, and provides sanctions against those who deliberately disrespect or misuse such attire. The committees after careful study and review hereby recommend for the approval of Ordinance number 2025-2236, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, for being proper in order and within the competence of this Sangguniang Bayan concerned to pass. So recommended.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before I recognize the Majority Floor Leader, I'd just like to make a short announce, brief announcement, that President Ferdinand R. Marcos has just appointed Secretary of Justice Jesus Cristian Boeing Remulia as the new Ombudsman of the Republic of the Philippines. Majority Floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For these four items, Mr. Chair, from item number 13 to 16, may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the fourth Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member, Attorney Oliver Owen Baba Garcia, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Garcia is recognized. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader and Mr. Chair. That's a sad news that you read.
I'm sorry to break it to you guys. Yes, go ahead.
Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Rules and Privileges, Committee Report number L-047 and R-0252, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Ordinance number 2025-0517, SB 7th Regular Session, uh, approved on September 8, 2025, the Sangguniang Bayan of Kadengilan, Bukinon, entitled "An Ordinance Adapting the Annual Celebration of Persons with Disabilities Rights Week in the Municipality of Kadengilan to be held from July 17 to 23 of every year." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the ordinance seeks to institutionalize the annual celebration of persons with disability rights week in the Municipality of Kadengilan, Bukinon, to be held from July 17 to 23 each year in alignment with the National Disability Prevention and Rehabilitation Week. It designates the Municipal Social Welfare and Development Office and the Persons with Disabilities Affairs Office as the lead agencies in the implementation of the activities and provides that the local government unit shall allocate the necessary logistical and financial support to promote the rights, dignity, and well-being of persons with disabilities. The measure is consistent with Republic Act number 7277, otherwise known as the Magna Carta for Persons with Disabilities, which mandates the protection and promotion of PWD rights, Presidential Proclamation number 361, Series of 2000, which declares July 17 to 23 as the National Disability Prevention and Rehabilitation Week, and Section 16 and 447 of Republic Act 7160 or the Local Government Code of 1991, which empower local government units to enact ordinances for the promotion of the general welfare. The ordinance is therefore consistent with national laws and policies and falls within the authority of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact. In view of the foregoing, the committee finds the proper, that the ordinance is proper, valid, and in order. The committee therefore recommends, after careful study, that for the approval of Ordinance number 2025-0517, SB 7th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Kadengilan, Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the scope of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Uh, joint, Mr. Chairman, Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Rules and Privileges, Committee Report L-048 and R-253. Mr. Chair, the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Executive Order number 007, Series of 2025, dated September 2, 2025, from the Office of the Municipal Mayor of Kitautau, Bukinon, entitled "An Order Organizing the Ad-hoc Municipal Screening Committee for the Philippine National Police Recruitment Program of the Municipality of Kitautau, Bukinon." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendation. Findings, the executive order seeks to formally organize an ad hoc municipal screening committee tasked to conduct preliminary screening, interviews, and endorsement of qualified PNP applicants within the municipality of Kitautau. The committee is chaired by the municipal mayor and composed of local officials, representatives from the PNP, MLGoo, and a civil society organization. It also establishes a secretariat to perform administrative and documentation functions to support the recruitment process of the Attrition Kota. This issuance finds legal basis under Memorandum Circular number 2007-009 and Memorandum Circular number 2011-007 of the Department of Interior and Local Government National Police Commission, which prescribes the procedure and guidelines for the recruitment, selection, and appointment of PNP uniformed personnel and mandate the creation of an ad hoc screening body at the municipal level. The issuance is likewise consistent with the general welfare provisions under Republic Act 7160 or the Local Government Code authorizing local chief executive to implement measures supportive of national programs. Considering the above findings, the committees conclude that the executive order is lawful, appropriate, and in harmony with established national policies and regulations. Recommendation, the executives, the committees after review and study hereby recommend for approval of Executive Order number 007, Series of 2025, from the Office of the Municipal Mayor of Kitautau, Bukinon, dated September 2, 2025, for being proper, in order, and within the competence of the local chief executive concerned to promulgate. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges, Committee Report L-49 and R-254, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Ordinance number 2025-2229, 5th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, entitled "An Ordinance Regulating the Establishment, Operation, and Maintenance of Funeral Parlors in the Municipality of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings, the committees found that the ordinance enacted by the municipality of Manolo Fortis sought to regulate the establishment and operation of funeral parlors to ensure public health, safety, and consumer protection. It was anchored in Section 16 of Republic Act 7160 or Local Government Code, which authorizes local governments to enact measures for the general welfare. Republic Act 7394, Consumer Act of the Philippines, Presidential Decree 856, Code of the Sanitation of the Philippines, and Department of Health Administrative Order number 2021-0056-A, which sets national standards for funeral operations and sanitation. The ordinance required funeral parlors to secure necessary permits, comply with sanitation and structural standards, employ licensed embalmers, and observe fair business practices. Oversight was vested in the municipal health office and business permit and licensing office to ensure compliance and enforcement. In view of the foregoing, the committees find the ordinance proper, valid, and in order. Recommendation, the committee after careful study hereby recommend for the approval of Ordinance number 2025-2229, 5th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the scope of the Sangguniang Bayan to enact. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Finally, uh, Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Rules and Privileges, Committee Report L-050 and R-255, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Rules and Privileges, to which was referred Ordinance number 2025-2237, 9th Regular Session, approved on September 8, 2025, of the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, entitled "An Ordinance Regulating the Sale, Access, and Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages in Public Places Within the Municipality of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendation. The ordinance regulates the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages with, by limiting sale hours from 5:00 in the morning to 12:00 midnight. Preventing sales to minors, requiring age verification and signage, and banning public drinking except in permitted areas in Manolo Fortis, Bukinon. Local government units are empowered to issue ordinance that uphold public welfare, safety, and order. Supporting this authority, PD 856, Code of on Sanitation of the Philippines, RA 11313, Safe Spaces Act, mandate the preservation of clean, safe, and orderly public environments. These national alcohol control policies promote responsible drinking practices and emphasizes, emphasize the protection of minors and other vulnerable sectors from harmful effects of alcohol. In line with national laws promoting public health and safety, the municipality of Manolo Fortis exercises police power to address local concerns over public drinking, safety, and youth protection. By limiting sale hours, requiring strict age verification, and confining alcohol consumption to designated areas, the ordinance, the ordinance responds to issues observed in the municipality such as disturbances and sanitary public spaces and risk to minors. Hence, the ordinance is a measure reasonably balances individual rights with community welfare, ensuring alcohol, ensuring responsible alcohol use and maintaining public safety. Recommendation, the committee after careful study hereby recommend for the approval of the Ordinance number 2025-2237, approved on September 8, 2025, the Sangguniang Bayan of Manolo Fortis, Bukinon, for being proper, in order, and within the competent, and within the scope of Sangguniang Bayan to enact. So recommended, Mr. Chair.
There being none. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proceeding to the last item, Mr. Chair, in this business for the day, Mr. Chair. Uh, item number 17, may we now recognize a gentleman coming from the first Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member, Eliser Isunhoun.
The Honorable Eliser Isunhoun is recognized. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Majority Floor Leader. A Joint Committee Report of the Committees on Public Services, Utilities, and Transportation and on Rules and Privileges. Mr. Chairman, the Committee on Public Services, Utilities, and Transportation and on Rules and Privileges, to which was referred the letter dated July 29, 2025, with the attachment of Provincial Governor Rohillio Neil Pierokey, this province, endorsing this August body for consideration and appropriate action. The request, FGEN San Isidro Hydro Power Corporation for the 40 megawatt San Isidro Hydro Power Project. Have considered the same and do hereby submit their comments, findings, and recommendations. The request from the Provincial Governor seeks the Sangguniang Panalawigan's favorable endorsement and appropriate action regarding the proposed 40 megawatt San Isidro Hydro Power Project by F-1st Gen San Isidro Hydro Power Corporation. The committee is found that the request is pursuant to Section 16 of the Republic Act 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991, which provides that every local government unit shall exercise the powers expressly granted those necessarily implied therefrom, as well as power necessary appropriate or incidental for its efficient and effective governance, and those which are essential to the promotion of that general welfare. Furthermore, this request is in accordance with Section 2 of the Republic Act 9513, also known as the Renewable Energy Act of 2008, which states that it is hereby declared the policy of the state to accelerate the exploration and development of renewable energy resources such as, but not limited to, biomass, solar, wind, hydro, geothermal, and ocean energy sources, including hybrid systems, to achieve energy self-reliance through the adoption of sustainable energy development strategies to reduce the country's dependence on fossils, fossil fuels, and thereby minimize the country's exposure to price fluctuations in the international markets, the effects of which spiral down to almost all sectors of the economy. The committees noted that the proposed 40 megawatt hydro power project falls directly under its mandate concerning public utilities and energy development. The project has the potential to significantly augment the region's power supply, promote the use of renewable energy, attract investments, generate employment, and contribute to the overall economic development of the Province of Bukinon. Recommendations, the committees after due deliberation and careful study hereby recommends for the approval of the endorsement of the old Provincial Governor Rohillio Neil Pierokey for consideration or appropriate action, the request of 1st Gen San Isidro Hydro Power Corporation for the 40 megawatt San Isidro Hydro Power Project. So recommended, Your Honor.
Objections, comments? There being none. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Honorable Isunhoun.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding now to our new business for the day, for Items number 18 and 19. May we now recognize a gentleman coming from the second Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member, Bobby J. Dinlayan.
The Honorable Bobby J. Dinlayan is recognized. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Proposed Resolution number 67, 2025, of the 28th SB, a resolution expressing full support for the accelerated implementation of the support to partialization of lands for individual titling, uh, split project in the Province of Bukinon. Whereas, Republic Act number 8388, 3844, Agricultural Land Reform Code, Republic Act number 6657, Comprehensive Agri-And Reform Law of 1998, as amended, Republic Act number 9- 9700, Carper Act, and Republic Act Number 8371, Indigenous Peoples' Rights Acts, mandate the state to implement agrarereform, ensure equitable land distribution and safeguard the rights of indigenous peoples. Whereas, the Department of Agrarereform, with the support from the World Bank and in coordination with the relevant agencies, is implementing the support to parcelization of lands for individual titling or split project, which seeks to subdivide collective certificates of land ownership award, or CLWAS, into individual land titles to agrarereform beneficiaries. Whereas, as of September 2025, the split project in Bukidnon has accomplished 33.9%, benefiting 3,830 agrarereform beneficiaries, including 70 IPs, with 424 CLWAS covering 4,325.6 hectares of process, while 66.81% remains unaccomplished, equivalent to 924 CLWAS covering 8,763 hectares, thereby affecting measurable progress but underscoring the urgent needs of accelerated implementation. Whereas, the active collaboration of the Department of Agrarereform, National Commission on Indigenous Peoples, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, the Land Registration Authority, the Registry of Deeds, Municipal and Barangay LGOs and Civil Society Organizations is indispensable for the timely and effective implementation of the split project. Whereas, Municipal, City and Barangay LGOs within the province are encouraged to extend their support through assistance in beneficiary identification and mapping validation of relevant area, provision of regulatory requirements, facilitation of dispute resolution and other forms of support essential to projects' implementation. Whereas, in close coordination with the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, Municipal, City and Barangay LGOs are likewise encouraged to conduct periodic consultations, orientations and informations, dissemination activities for ARBs, IPs and other stakeholders to promote awareness and compliance with project requirements. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Another resolution, Number 68-2025, of the 28 SP, a resolution strongly urging concern national government agencies and local government units in the provincial of Bukidnon to ensure the timely implementation and support to parcelization of lands for individual titling project through enhanced coordination, technical assistance and monitoring. Whereas, the Department of Agrarereform, with support from the World Bank and in coordination with the relevant agencies, is implementing the support to parcelization of lands for individual titling, which seeks to subdivide collective certificates of land ownership award into individuals' land titles to agrarereform beneficiaries. Whereas, notwithstanding measurable progress, persistent challenges such as unlocated beneficiaries, overlapping claims and gaps in data sharing and documentation continue to hamper the project's completion, necessitating enhanced inter-agency coordination and strengthened support from local government units. Whereas, the Philippine government has extended the split project implementation until December 31, 2027, pursuant to the World Bank project update, affirming both the continuing urgency of the program and its vital contribution to agrarian justice and rural development. Whereas, the cooperation of civil society organizations, farmers' organizations, agrarereform beneficiaries and indigenous peoples is indispensable to the success of the split project, which the Department of Agrarereform shall facilitate by accrediting, recognizing and engaging these stakeholders in accordance with its mandate. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Bobby J. Dinlayan.
Mr. Chairman, yes, may we now recognize our IPMR, Mr. Chair, the Honorable Board Member Attorney Albeleses for item number 20, Mr. Chairman.
The Honorable Albeleses is recognized, go ahead, Dato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Majority. Proposed Resolution Number 069-2025, a resolution expressing profound gratitude and commendation in recognition to Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative of the Daraguayan Ancestral Domain in Malay Balay City for sharing the journey of the successfully implemented pilot project for indigenous peoples' coffee enterprise that will serve as a model for benchmarking socioeconomic development to other indigenous cultural communities in Bukidnon. Whereas, the national government under Department of Agriculture undertakes the five-year Mindanao Inclusive Agriculture Development Project, MEADP, from 2023 to 2028, to increase agricultural productivity and seeks to enhance resiliency and access to markets and services of organized farmer and fisherfolk groups in identified ancestral domains in Mindanao, especially in Bukidnon, that undergone thorough validation among stakeholders as the pilot project under Republic Act 11321, otherwise known as an act instituting the farmers' and fisherfolk enterprise development program of the Department of Agriculture. Whereas, the Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative recently secured Regional Project Advisory Board approval for its indigenous peoples' coffee enterprise under the Department of Agriculture's World Bank-funded Mindanao Inclusive Agriculture Development Project and was granted 15,200,000 pesos for the indigenous communities' coffee enterprise, entitled Coffee Consolidation, Processing and Marketing, and showcased the success during the fourth World Bank mission last August 21, 2025, held in Davao City. Whereas, the Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative of the Daraguayan Ancestral Domains Indigenous Peoples' Organization in Malay Balay City, Bukidnon, Bukidnon's Heralom Arabika also bagged the second place in the Philippine coffee quality competition last May 9 to 11, 2025, held in Makati City, Metro Manila, a milestone that will greatly benefit the indigenous cultural community. Whereas, Ms. Merle O. Sudai, the General Manager of Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative, and also a tribal member of the Daraguayan Ancestral Domain, shared the success stories in the recently concluded Strengthening Indigenous Peoples' STIP, Mindanao Capacity Development Training, Transparent Governance Through Understanding Customer Laws, IPR, and the Do No Harm Approach, esperreded by the Mindanao Development Authority, MINDA, in collaboration with the Bukidnon Provincial Indigenous Peoples' Mandatory Representative Office last September 2022 to 2023, 2025, held in Malay Balay City, Bukidnon. Whereas, indeed, the journey of the Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative set as a benchmark to other indigenous cultural communities in Bukidnon that there is a need of the balancing cross-cultural indigenous knowledge systems and practices of its ICC and the initiatives of the government towards inclusive participation in socioeconomic empowerment in Bukidnon. Whereas, it is but proper and fitting for the Sangunyang Panalawigan to commend and congratulate in recognition of the journey of Inhandig Tribal Multipurpose Cooperative for bringing honor and aspiration not only to the province but also in the national and international indigenous cultural communities. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Lastly, Mr. Chair, sorry, the award will be given, I give it to the SP Secretary as to when and where.
Mr. Chairman, proceeding to item number 21 and 22. By this representation...
Yes, go ahead, Majority Floor.
These two items, Mr. Chairman, are all the endorsement coming from our Provincial Government Department head, PJSO, and the back Chairman, Attorney Minister Ikahes, for wording the set of legal documents for the renewal of accreditation, Mr. Chairman. First, for item number 21, the GRA-AGG Builders, with the address located at Everlasting Village, Poplasyon Pakatukan, Bukidnon, and also item number 22, Mr. Chairman, Di Mamawag Construction, the address located at 0353 Abilio Street, Barangay 6, Malay Balay City, Bukidnon. These two contractors to engage business with the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and having established that this firm is fully complied with the necessary obligations and essential requirements to transact business as per evaluation conducted by the Beach and Awards Committee, thus omnibus motion for the approval of the renewal of these two contractors, Mr. Chairman, for item number 21 and 22, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none, motion is approved.
Proceeding to item number 23, Mr. Chairman, may we now recognize gentleman coming from the Second Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member Attorney Holis Simontanto.
The Honorable Monsanto is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is again a communication addressed to the Committee on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges, specifically a letter dated September 25, 2025, with the attachment coming from the Office of the Provincial Budget Officer, Provincial Budget Office, Province of Bukidnon, which transmitted to this August body for appropriate action, supplemental budget number three, General Finance Special Account, Economic Enterprise Calendar Year 2024, of the Municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukidnon, in the amount of 12,27,284 pesos. Attached to this communication are budget documents and technical review analysis for reference and perusal. The committee has taken going over the same, finds this supplemental budget number three to be proper and in order, and hereby recommend for its approval, subject to the existing budgeting, accounting and auditing rules and regulations. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, may we now recognize the Honorable Board Member Doc RJ Pipito for item number 24, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable RJ Pipito is recognized, go ahead, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As for item number 24, Mr. Chairman, I would move to pass a resolution relative to the letter coming from Provincial Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke, a resolution on the composition of the Human Resource Merit Promotion and Selection Board, Mr. Chairman. I so move.
Objection, comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, may we now recognize the Honorable Board Member Attorney Oliver Owen Baba Garcia from item number 25 to 52, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Garcia is recognized, good luck to you.
Yeah, Doc, Mr. Chair, we have the same salary, but I have most of the job, off the record, off the record. Mr. Chair, item number 25 is a letter dated September 26, 2025, with attachment from the Provincial Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to enter into a memorandum agreement with the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, to represent the Provincial Government of Bukidnon to sign the MOA with the Philippine Sports Commission, where the PSC has identified the province of Bukidnon as a training hub for national boxers in preparation for upcoming competitions, while also strengthening grassroots sports program for long-term development. The PSC shall provide financial assistance, technical expertise and training support for athletes, while the PGP shall provide facilities, utilities, dormitory space, security and logistical support at the Bukidnon Sports and Cultural Complex in Lagitas, Malay Balay City. The partnership aims to establish Bukidnon as a regional training hub, bringing national level opportunities closer to the athlete's hometown, while also ensuring community participation through the opening of sports facilities to the public, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the MOA. So moving for the approval of a resolution granting authority to the governor to sign the MOA with the Philippine Sports Commission. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Comments, there being none, motion is approved.
Item number 26 is a letter dated August 11, 2025, with attachment of Provincial Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to enter into a memorandum agreement for, in behalf of the Provincial Government of Bukidnon, with the University of the Philippines Department of Health Center for Health Development, Northern Mindanao and Southern Philippines Medical Center. This is with regards to the appointment of the Bukidnon Provincial Medical Center by the DOH as the host organization of the Newborn Screening Continuity Clinic, NBSCC, in the province of Bukidnon, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the memorandum of agreement. With that, Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of a resolution granting authority to the governor to enter into a memorandum agreement with the University of the Philippines Department of Health Center for Health Development and Northern Mindanao and Southern Philippines Medical Center. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none, motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, items 27, 28, 29, 30 and 31 are for contract of services for our visiting consultants in our various hospitals in the province of Bukidnon. So may I just read item 27, so that I can pass an omnibus motion on this matter, Mr. Chair? 27 refers to the contract between the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and Dr. Ariane Selfeb R. Pau Gaura, RN, visiting consultant in internal medicine, Dr. Emeline May G. Catilo, visiting OB-GYN specialist. Item 28 is a contract with Alfredo Credo, Dr. Alfredo Credo S. Rubio, visiting consultant in orthopedic surgery of the BPMC. Item 29 is a contract with Dr. James G. Mercado, a visiting consultant in neurosurgery of the BPMC. Item number 30 is also a contract of service with Dr. Jose Rene P. Ong, DPBR, visiting consultant in the radiology department of BPMC. And finally, item 31 is a contract of service with Dr. Neil C. Ranha, MD, DPS, P. DPCOM, visiting consultant... ...visiting consultant as pathologist of BPH Malitbog. So with that, Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of a resolution granting authority to the Provincial Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke to enter into a contract of service with the various doctors, Mr. Chair. So moving.
Objection, comments, there are none, motion is approved.
Item number 32, Mr. Chair, is a letter dated August 27, 2025, with attachment from the Provincial Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke, this province requesting this August body for authority to enter into a deed of conditional donation by and between the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and the local government of Talakag. For the donation consists of 50 constructed houses of Paglaon Village Housing Project located at Barangay Santo Nino, Talakag, Bukidnon. Mr. Chair, I would like to refer first this matter to the Committee on Laws for further evaluation, as there are items I do not understand. Move for the referral of this item to the Committee on Laws.
Objection, comments, there are none, motion is approved.
Item 33 is a letter dated September 25, 2025, with attachment from the Governor Rojillo Neil Piroke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to enter into a deed of donation and acceptance by and between the Provincial Government of Bukidnon and NCIP Province of Bukidnon, represented by Dato Ronaldo I. Bayaon, Provincial Officer. This is with regards to the donation of 100 units of project Ipanao Coffee Table Books, Pagkilala, Paggalang and Pagtaguyod, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the deed of donation and acceptance. Mr. Chair, may I move to pass a resolution granting authority to the Provincial Governor of Bukidnon to enter into a deed of donation and acceptance with the NCIP Province of Bukidnon relative to the coffee... relative to the coffee table book called Ipanao. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item thirty-four is a letter dated September seventeen, twenty-twenty-five with attachment of provincial Governor Rahilionil Roke, this province, requesting this August body for authority to enter the deed of donation for, in behalf of the provincial government of Bukidnon, with three Liga ng mga barangay of the first district province of Bukidnon as listed below. For the donation of nine hundred sixty-four mono-black chairs with the following description: One, recipient Liga ng mga barangay Manolo Fortiche. Description mono-black chair quantity three-hundred-seventy-nine. Total value two hundred sixty-five thousand one hundred ten pesos and fifty centavos. Number two, Liga ng mga barangay Talakag Bukidnon. Mono-black chairs, four hundred thirty-four units or pieces. Uh, total value three hundred four thousand two hundred eighty-two point fifty. And number three, Liga ng mga barangay Sumilao Bukidnon. Mono-black chairs, one hundred fifty pieces. Amount, total amount or total value one hundred four thousand nine hundred twenty-five pesos. For a total value of six hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred eighteen pesos and a total units of nine hundred sixty-four. With that, Mr. Chair, move to grant, uh, pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to enter into a deed of donation in behalf of the provincial government, uh, with the three Liga ng mga barangay of the first district of Bukidnon, particularly barangay Manolo Fortiche, Liga ng mga barangay Talakag, and Liga ng mga barangay Bukidnon. So moving, uh, Sumilao. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number thirty-five is a letter dated September ten, twenty-twenty-five with attachment from the provincial governor Rahilionil Roke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to enter into a use-of-fract agreement by and between the provincial government of Bukidnon and the Philippine National Police Maritime Group Regional Maritime Unit Number Ten, PNP Maritime Group, RMU-ten, where the PGP shall grant the PNP Maritime Group, RMU-ten, the use of the PGP outpost located at the PNP, uh, located at Vicentinari Street, Barangay Six, Malay Balai City, Bukidnon, which has been identified as available. With the information that the PNP Maritime Group, RMU-ten, through Police Colonel Charlie T. Vete, Regional Chief, has requested assistance for accommodation, billing of the PNP Regional Special Operations Team during law enforcement operations against violation of environmental laws, including illegal logging, mining, and mining, subject to the terms and conditions as set out in the use-of-fract agreement. Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to enter into a use-of-fract agreement with the, in behalf of the provincial government of Bukidnon, with the Philippine National Police Maritime Group Regional Maritime Unit Number Ten? So moving for the approval, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number thirty-six is a letter, is an undated letter dated with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash four-five-nine of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the contract of agreement purchase order for the project supply and delivery of IT equipment for various offices. Supplier with the following suppliers: Biswiss Computer Center, amount eight hundred three thousand one hundred eighty pesos; Exicom Computer Sales and Services, two hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred thirty pesos; Millennial Tech Computer and Office Supply, six hundred forty-six thousand ninety pesos, for a grand total of one million seven hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Business Awards Committee in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of RA-9184 and twelve-zero-zero-nine. Mr. Chair, finding the same to be in order, I move to pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to enter into a contract of agreement or purchase order for the supply and delivery of IT equipment for various offices with Biswiss Computer Center, Exicom Computer Sales and Services, Millennial Tech Computer and Office Supply. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number thirty-seven is an undated letter with a touchback resolution. Anyway, uh, resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-five-nine of the provincial governor Rahilionil Piroke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to sign the contract of agreement for the project supply and delivery of two units pickup for LTO Malay Balai and LTO Maramag with one supplier Toyota Valencia City Incorporated for the contract cost of two million six hundred thousand pesos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Business Awards Committee in accordance with implementing rules and regulations of RA-9184. This request is certified urgent by the provincial governor. Uh, Mrs. Chair, I think this is in relation to the road safety program of the provincial government. So with that, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority uh, to the provincial governor, uh, to sign the contract of agreement for the supply and delivery of two units pickup for LTO Malay Balai and LTO Maramag with Toyota Valencia City Incorporated. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number thirty-eight is a letter also undated with a touchback resolution twenty-twenty-five dash five-five-two of provincial Governor Rahilionil Roke, this province, requesting this August body for authority to sign the contract of agreement for the project supply and delivery of one-lat janitorial supplies for various hospitals with one supplier, Marci's Corporation, for the contract cost of seven hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred pesos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the Provincial Business Awards Committee in accordance with the implementing rules of RA-9184, and this is certified urgent by the provincial governor. Finding the same to be in order, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to enter into a contract of agreement for the supply and delivery of one-lat janitorial supplies for various hospitals with one supplier, uh, Marci's Corporation, for the contract cost of seven hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item thirty-nine is a letter dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-two of the provincial Governor Rahilionil Roke, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat construction materials and other supplies for bendro with one supplier X and Z, X and C Building Construction for the contract cost of one million one hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-seven pesos and twenty-four centavos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of nine-one-eight-four and RA twelve-zero-zero-nine, and this request is certified urgent by the provincial governor. Finding the same to be complete and in order, Mr. Chair, I move for the passage of a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign a contract of agreement uh, for the supply and delivery of one-lat construction materials and other supplies for bendro in the contract cost of one million one hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-seven pesos and twenty-four centavos with as one supplier X and C Building Construction. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty is a letter dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-three of the provincial governor Bukidnon Rahilionil Roke, this requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order or contract for the project supply and delivery of one-lat construction materials and other supplies for various offices and hospitals with one supplier TMM Construction Supplies for the contract cost of seven hundred, seven hundred nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-three pesos and eighty-one centavos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA nine-one-eight-four and twelve-zero-zero-nine. Finding the same to be in order and complete, may I pass a resolution, Mr. Chair, granting authority to the governor to sign the purchase order or contract uh, for the project supply and delivery of one-lat construction materials and other supplies for various offices and hospitals with one supplier TMM Construction Supplies for the contract cost of seven hundred nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-three pesos and eighty-one centavos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty-one is a letter dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-four of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order or contract for the project supply and delivery of one-lat kitchenware supplies and other materials for various offices and hospitals with one supplier Marci's Corporation for the contract cost of four hundred forty-four thousand six hundred pesos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA nine-one-eight-four and RA twelve-zero-zero-nine. This request is certified urgent. So with that, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign the purchase order, contract for the project supply and delivery of one-lat kitchenware supplies and other materials for various offices and hospitals with one supplier Marci's Corporation for the contract cost of four hundred forty-four thousand six hundred pesos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, none. Motion approved.
Item number forty-two is also a letter dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five with BAC resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-five of the provincial governor, this province, requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order, contract for the project supply and delivery of one-lat textile supplies and other materials for various offices and hospitals with one supplier Marci's Corporation for the contract cost of four hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred. The procurement of the project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA nine-one-eight-four and RA twelve-zero-zero-nine. This request is also certified as urgent. With that, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign the purchase order, contract for the project supply and delivery of one-lat textile supplies and other materials for various offices and hospitals with one supplier Marci's Corporation for the contract cost of four hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty-three is a letter dated September twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-six of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the contract of agreement for the project supply and delivery of one-lat dietary supplies for PDRC and BPMC with one supplier Kasia Trading for the contract cost of two million five hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred ten pesos. The procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA twelve-zero-zero-nine. This request is certified urgent by the provincial governor. So moving for a resolu, for the passage of resolution, Mr. Chair, uh, granting authority to the governor to sign the contract of agreement for the project supply and delivery of one-lat dietary supplies for the provincial Detention and Rehabilitation Center and the Bukidnon Provincial Medical Center with one supplier Kasia Trading for the contract cost of two million five hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred ten pesos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item forty-four is a letter dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-seven of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order for the sup, for the project supply and delivery of medical supplies, laboratory reagents, and equipment for various offices with one supplier RBJ Commodities Trading Exponent for the contract cost of five hundred three thousand eight hundred forty pesos. The procurement of the project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA twelve-zero-zero-nine, also certified as urgent by the provincial governor. With that, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign the purchase order, uh, for the supply and delivery of medical supplies, laboratory reagents, and equipment for various offices with one supplier RBJ Commodities Trading Exponent for the contract cost of five hundred three thousand eight hundred forty pesos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item forty-five is a letter dated September twenty-nine with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-eight of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of various drugs and medicines for PHO, PHRMO, PDRC, and PSWDO with one supplier Aton Pharma for the contract cost of six hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred forty-five, uh, four hundred forty-five pesos and sixty centavos. Six-five-one, six-five-one. Uh, the procurement for the aforementioned project was conducted by the BAC in accordance with the IRR of RA nine-one-eight-four, and this request is certified urgent by the provincial governor. With that, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the governor to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of various drugs and medicines for the PHO, PHRMO, PDRC, and PSWDO with one supplier Aton Pharma for the contract cost of six hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred forty-five pesos and sixty centavos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Letter, item number forty-six, letter dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-nine of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of medical supplies and laboratory reagents for PHO, PHRMO, PIDEA, BOK, PCLO, and PLO with the following supplier: One, Biru Ban Marketing Incorporated for the amount, in the amount of one hundred, one hundred ninety thousand one hundred fifty-six pesos; RB, RBJ Commodities Trading Exponent, five hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred pesos for a grand total of five hundred three thousand eight hundred forty. Finding the same, the same to be in order, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign authori, to sign the purchase order for the supplies, for the supply and delivery of medical supplies and laboratory agents for PHO, PHRMO, PIDEA, BOK, PCLO, and PLO with Biru Ban Marketing Incorporated and RBJ Commodities Trading Exponent for a grand total of five hundred three thousand eight hundred forty pesos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty-seven is a letter dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-seventy of the provincial governor, this province requesting this August body for an authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat various dietary supplies for various offices with one supplier Kasia Trading for the contract cost of two million five hundred three thousand pesos and fifty-three centavos. The same is cer, this request is certified as urgent, Mr. Chair, and finding the same to be in order, may I pass a resolution granting the provincial governor uh, the authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of one-lat various dietary supplies for various offices with one supplier Kasia Trading for the contract cost of two million five hundred three thousand pesos and fifty-three centavos. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty-eight is a letter dated September twenty-twenty-five with BAC touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-seventy-one of the provincial governor, this province, requesting for authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of animal zoological supplies for PIVET and PGO Bukidnon Provincial Zoo with the following suppliers: K9 Veterinary Services and PNJ Agricultural Trading Incorporated with the following respective amounts: For K9 Veterinary Services, one million three hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-six; and for PJ Agricultural Trading Incorporated, three hundred seventy-six thousand and five pesos for a grand total of one million seven hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-one pesos. This is certified as urgent, Mr. Chair, so I move for a resolution granting authority to the provincial governor to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of animal zoological supplies for PIVET and PGO Bukidnon Provincial Zoo. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved.
Item number forty-nine dated September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five with a touchback resolution number twenty-twenty-five dash five-seventy-two of the provincial governor Rahilionil Roke, this province requesting this August body for an authority to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of anti-Adis-borne viral disease supplies for PHO with one supplier Irvine True and Frank Carson Philippines Incorporated for the contract cost of six hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred thirty pesos and fifty centavos. The procurement was conducted by the BAC in accordance with IRR of RA nine-one-eight-four, and this request is certified as urgent by the provincial governor. Finding the same to be complete and in order, Mr. Chair, may I pass a resolution granting authority to the governor to sign the purchase order for the project supply and delivery of anti-Adis-borne viral disease supplies for PHO with one supplier Irvine True and Frank Carson Philippines Incorporated for the contract cost of six hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred thirty pesos and fifty centavos. So moving for the approval, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments, there are none. Motion is approved. One more.
Yeah, may we now proceed to our addendum, Mr. Chairman. We have three items, um, tabled in this, uh... So may we again recognize, Mr. Chair, a gentleman coming from the fourth legi- So may we again recognize, Mr. Chair, gentleman coming from the fourth legislative district to continue, the honorable attorney Oliver Owen.
All right, item forty-six?
Fifty.
Fifty. Mister Chair, joint committee report of the Committees on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Committee on Rules and Privileges, Committee Report L dash zero-fifty-one and Committee Report two-five-nine, two-five-seven of the Committee on Rules, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and Rules and Privileges to which was referred, a letter dated September twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five of the Governor Ruihilo Neil Roque, provincial governor and chairperson of PDC, PPOC, PHB, PSCB, PADAC, and PDRRMC, endorsing to this August body the joint resolution of the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, and the Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, Resolution Number nine dash twenty-twenty-five entitled "Approving and Adapting the Executive and Legislative Agenda 2026 to 2028 and Provincial Development Investment Program 2026 to 2028 of the Province of Bukitnon and endorsing the resolution to the Sanggunian Panaluwigan for adoption and approval." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendation. Findings: Formulated in accordance with Section 106 of Republic Act 7160 or the Local Government Code, the Executive Legislative Agenda (ELA) and the Provincial Development Investment Program (PDIP) serve as the province's overall roadmap for governance, development programs, and budget planning. These documents aim to align the priorities of both executive and legislative branches to ensure coordinated implementation of projects and initiatives within the three-year period of the Province of Bukitnon. The Provincial Planning and Development Office (PPDO) reported that Bukitnon, covering 1.49 million hectares with 63.77% classified as timberland and 32.23% as illinable and disposable, is the largest and most populous province in Region 10. Despite its strong agricultural output, the province continues to face a 2.2% poverty incidence affecting approximately 79,930 families. This situation is primarily due to the unequal land ownership, income disparity, and reduced employment opportunities resulting from agricultural mechanization. The committees express concern over the paradox of Bukitnon being a resource-rich province yet continuing to experience high levels of poverty. They emphasize the need for the provincial government through the PPDO with the ELA to formulate and implement more inclusive and equitable development programs. The ELA and PDIP were comprehensively discussed and recently concluded ELA workshop. The presentation focused on particular key findings and priority areas for legislative and development action. The following key development issues were discussed: Low adaptability of farm machinery, insufficient irrigation water systems, poor road conditions, and low share of legislation on development frameworks, low investment in ICT for provincial documents and records. The PPDO emphasized the need to invest strategically in infrastructure, human resource development, and environmental protection. The total investment requirement for fiscal year 2026 is 41.508 billion with a projected funding of 6.4 billion, including 2.8 billion from the local development fund. The remaining fiscal gap will be addressed through careful prioritization and yearly budget adjustments. The committee directed the adoption of the term "low utilization" in lieu of "low adaptability" to be more accurate, to more accurately reflect the condition wherein farm machinery is available but underutilized due to insufficient operator training and technical support. It was emphasized that equipment provisions without corresponding capacity building constraints agricultural productivity. The PPDO further reported that inadequate irrigation across many agriculture areas continues to result in low farm output and unstable crop yields. Engineer Jezrel Mangobat clarified that while provincial roads and national highways are generally in fair condition and well taken care of, numerous barangay and farm-to-market roads remain dilapidated and impending logistics and market access that imposes who- that imposes poor road conditions are still a development issue. The committee thus recognized the urgency of prioritizing the road rehabilitation and maintenance under the economic component of the PDIP 2026 to 2028 to improve connectivity and rural economic mobility. The committee likewise observed that it is a key development issue of having low share of legislation on development frameworks given the limited number of enacted measures that are classified as development-oriented, reflecting the need to strengthen legislative quality. There is also a need to improve records management and promote digital transformation across provincial offices, putting available and significant investment in ICT and proposed plan. The chair emphasized the importance of producing data-driven, inclusive, and high-impact legislation aligned with the goals and of the Executive Legislative Agenda and the Provincial Development Investment Program. The committee also identified deficiencies in records management and the absence of digital infrastructure, particularly in key offices such as the Provincial Assessor's Office despite existing national mandates. The committee stressed the necessity of investing information and communication technology to ensure data integrity, administrative efficiency, and continuity during emergencies, and called for data-driven, inclusive, and high-impact legislative actions aligned with ELA and PDIP goals. For the guidance of the August body, the following proposed legislative measures for 2026-2028 were identified: Economic: Inactment of an agricultural machinery registration ordinance, amendment of the Provincial Investment Code, and passage of a property valuation ordinance. Environmental: Updating the Bukitnon Environment Code and strengthening the forest and watershed protection initiatives. Infrastructure: Inactment of provincial road development and right-of-way ordinances and endorsement of key national infrastructure projects. Social: Review and enhancement of social protection programs and coordination with CHED and PDAU to promote inclusive tertiary education for individuals with special needs. Governance: Adoption of a competency-based human resource system consistent with CSE standards and implementation of ICT-based systems for records management and digital archiving. The twenty-eighth Sanggunian Panaluwigan through Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights reaffirms the commitment, its commitment to support the provincial government of Bukitnon in carrying out the priority programs, projects, and activities under the ELA and PDIP, especially those aimed at advancing inclusive development, alleviating poverty, protecting the environment, and enhancing institutional capacity and its legislation to address the deeds of the people of Bukitnon. Recommendation: The committees after due deliberation and discussion hereby recommend for the approval of the endorsement of the provincial governor and for the adoption of a Joint Resolution Number nine, twenty-twenty-five covering the Executive Legislative Agenda 2026 to 2028 and the Provincial Development Investment Program 2026-2028 of the Province of Bukitnon. So recommending, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Last item, item fifty-one, Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Peace and Order and the Rules and Rules and Privileges. Mister Chairman, the Committee on Peace and Order and Rules and Privileges to which was referred, a letter dated September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five with attachments of Ruihilo Neil Roque, provincial governor and chairperson of PDC, PPOC, PHB, PSCB, PADAC, and PDRRMC this province endorsing to this August body the Joint Resolution Number ten dash twenty-twenty-five entitled "A Resolution Approving the Bukitnon Provincial Peace and Order and Public Safety Plan (POPSPE)" with a subsumed Local Anti-Drug Plan of Action (LADPA) for calendar years 2026 to 2028." Have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. Findings: The request from the provincial governor seeks the Sanggunian Panaluwigan's provincial endorsement, a favorable endorsement of Joint Resolution Number ten dash twenty-twenty-five, the Peace and Order and Public Safety Plan with a subsumed Local Anti-Drug Plan of Action for calendar years 2026 to 2028, which was passed and approved during the joint meeting of the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Risk and Reduction Management Council. The committees found that the request is pursuant to the following legal mandates: One, Section sixteen of RA seventy-one sixty, also known as General Welfare Clause, which grants local government units the power to govern for their general welfare, enabling them to exercise necessary powers and promote public interests like health, safety, peace, and order, culture, economic prosperity, and environmental protection within their jurisdictions. Number two, Section one-one-six of RA seventy-one sixty, which mandates the establishment of a Peace and Order Council in every province, city, and municipality in the Philippines to coordinate all efforts towards maintaining peace and order and public safety within respective areas of jurisdiction. Number three, Sec- Section three of Paragraph B, Executive Order Number seven-seven-three, Series of two thousand and nine, which specifies the duties and functions of subnational councils, one of which is to recommend measures which will improve or enhance peace and order and public safety in their respective areas of responsibility, including anti-insurgency measures. And number four, DLG Memorandum Circular Number twenty-two-two dash one-one-eight, which addresses all provincial governors, city, and municipal mayors, DLG regional directors, Philippine National Police, and other concerns regarding the guidelines on the development and formulation of the Peace and Order and Public Safety Plan for 2026 to 2028, the 2023 to 2025. The committees noted that the resolution clearly falls within the scope of their mandates, specifically in relation to the issues concerning peace, public order, and overall security. Recommendation: The committees after due deliberation and discussion hereby recommend for the approval of the endorsement of the provincial governor Ruihilo Neil Roque and for the adoption of Joint Resolution Number ten, Series of twenty-twenty-five covering the Peace and Order and Public Safety Plan with a subsumed Local Anti-Drug Plan of Action for calendar years 2026 to 2028. So moving, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Mister Chairman, for the last item that we have in the new business for the day, Honorable Presiding Officer, we will now recognize the Honorable Board Member Attorney Julio Simonsanto in the chair of the Committee on Appropriations, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Monsanto is recognized, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mister Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. This is a joint committee report on the Committees on Appropriations and on Rules and Privileges to which was referred Joint Resolution Number eight of the Provincial Development Council, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster and Risk Reduction Management Council. The said resolution, the said Joint Resolution Number eight entitled "Approving the Annual Investment Program for the Fiscal Year 2026 of the Province of Bukitnon and endorsing the said resolution to the Sanggunian Panaluwigan for adoption and the subsequent issuance of an ordinance." The Joint Committee on Rules and Privileges have considered the same and hereby submit their findings, comments, and recommendations. As to the findings, the joint resolution endorsed by the PDC, PPOC, PHB, PSCB, PADAC, and the PDRRMC aims to approve the annual investment plan for fiscal year 2026 of the Province of Bukitnon. The same was the subject of a committee hearing by the Committee on Appropriations and Rules and Privileges to which the same was thoroughly discussed, including the amount which the annual investment program covers. And for the record, the said annual investment program, the total appropriation of the same is 6,427,635,140 pesos. The same has been properly mentioned in the attachment of the said resolution, Mister Chair. And after a thorough discussion, the committee finds that the said resolution is consistent with the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one, and the same is in line with the existing budgeting and appropriation laws. Thus, the committee after due deliberation hereby recommend for the approval of Joint Resolution Number eight dash twenty-twenty-five of the PD, Provincial Development Council, Provincial, Provincial Peace and Order Council, Provincial Health Board, Provincial School Board, Provincial Anti-Drug Abuse Council, and the Provincial Disaster Risk and Management Council for being proper, in order, and within the scope of the Local Development Council to resolve. Further, the committee hereby recommend to pass an ordinance approving the investment program for fiscal year 2026 of the Province of Bukitnon. So recommended, Mister Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Taking into the urgency of the matter, Mister Chair, we move that the third and final reading, Mister Chair, be dispensed with in order to pass the ordinance of the annual investment program of the Province of Bukitnon. So moving, Mister Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Monsanto.
Yes, Mister Chairman, we have no item calendered in the third and final reading, so we will not proceed with the other communication before we adjourn our regular session, Mister Chair. So, I, I, I move for the following, Mister Chairman. Item number one be forwarded to the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights for information reference. For item number two, Mister Chairman, this be forwarded to the Committee on Health for information reference. Item number three be forwarded to the Committee of Beautification to receive information reference. Item number four be forwarded to the Committee on Games and Abusement for information reference. Item number five be forwarded to the Committee on Dangerous Cultural Communities and Dangerous People for information reference. Item number six, this will be noted, Mister Chairman, and for item number seven be forwarded to the Committee on Health for information reference. And last item, Mister Chairman, item number eight, this will be forwarded to the all Sanggunian Panaluwigan members for information and appropriate action. So moving for the approval of the items enumerated, Mister Chair.
Say again. Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Board member's time, Mister Chairman, we will not proceed to the other matters, Mister Chair.
Okay. Board Member Garcia raised his hand first, and then Board Member Marlon Dinlayan and Board Member Jay Dinlayan, Babij.
Mister Chair, just like close the secretary. Kung necessary pa ba ang email acknowledgement to be calendered?
Sorry?
The email acknowledgement. We sent the, the letter of commendation.
Yes.
And then the acknowledged receipt of that letter resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Is it necessary to be calendered?
What does, what do the rules say?
Thank you for that query, Mister Chair. At to any communications addressed to the Sanggunian Panaluwigan, it is just a call of the secretary to the Sanggunian in exercise of its ministerial function to calendar this for information of the, this August body. But if this body would give instructions to just dispense this, we can, we can do the same, sir.
Yeah, because if it is the case, Mister Chair, then I would demand the others, if it was already transmitted and the board back. Now, karunamagod na ako nakita that there is an email acknowledgement nga kalender, ni read out sa Majority Floor Leader. So, there are a lot of communications coming out of this chamber, of this Sanggunian. And so, we send it out to Malakanyang, we send it out to our representatives and all other offices. We don't see it calendared having been received. So, I, I, I just think it's an administrative matter that di na kinhanglan siguro he kalender pa, no, for the information of the Sanggunian. We assume that the secretary is doing his job and sending it out. If there is a problem, that's the time that you inform the Sanggunian. But under normal circumstance, di na siguro, kitaas na kayo ang ano.
Yeah, this is noted, Mister Chair. In general, we are just doing this in exercise of our ministerial function to calendar this.
If maybe.
This body has the discretion to instruct this office to dispense this kind of information when, then we can do so.
I think for that communication, Mister Chairman, I think it is on the level of our secretary to inform the Sanggunian on the secretary's time, siguro. No need for me to have that motion, diba? To be calendared.
Yeah, PD, Mister Chair.
I think, I think on the level of our secretary to make some manifestations regarding the received communications. So say one, na siguro.
Yes, this is well, well-accepted instruction, Mister Chair.
Okay, Honorable Marlon Dinlayan.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Good afternoon, and also my colleagues. This is about the ordinance amending Section six and Section twenty-three, otherwise known as the Tourism Code of Bukitnon. And in line with this, Mister Chairman, I am respectfully requesting for a committee meeting and to be attended by the members of the Committee on Tourism and Beautification, and to be scheduled this coming- and to be scheduled this coming October 14, that is Tuesday.
Next Tuesday at what time?
At nine o'clock in the morning.
Nine o'clock in the morning.
So, I would like to, Madam Sekretary, could you pidi mabasa ang members for a reminder lampot?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The Committee on...
Tourism and Beautification.
Tourism and Beautification. The members are the following, be the chairman, Board Member Marlon Brando B. Dinlayan, vice-chairman, Board Member Ranolfo C. Junior G. Pipito, members, Board Member Minerva C. Kasinabi, Board Member Bobby J. B. Dinlayan, and Board Member Ria Luas Kalinas.
And, thank you.
Anything else?
May I ask, Mr. Chair, the invited guest for this committee meeting, Mr. Chair?
Yes, who would you like to invite?
I would like to invite the provincial head tourism, who is Mr. Butch Anthony Melendez, and as well as the provincial event organizer, at the same time the executive assistant to, Mr. Cornelio Milan Cruz.
What's the agenda of the committee meeting?
About the Tourism Code of Bukidnun, amending section six and section twenty-three.
Okay, so let that be included in the invitation that the meeting seeks to discuss the amendment of the Bukidnun Tourism Code.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this will be coordinated, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Honorable Dinlayan?
That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Honorable Bobby J. Dinlayan, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding in our commending resolutions, as agreed last regular session, no? Meron akong may napulat ng tong... So, I am wondering, pilagin atong budget sa atong mga plaque?
Um, for the year 2025, Mr. Chair, we have an allocated amount of 200,000 for blocks, Mr. Chair.
200,000, pilay na bilin karoon?
We have an outstanding payable of 54,000 something.
Payable? Payable, sunatay utang?
Pero, actually, we have available funds pa, pero, on project...
Yeah, the question was how much is the available fund left?
We have a balance of 46,000, Mr. Chair, for the year 2025, Mr. Chair. We have till a payable of 54,000.
Shorty, ya puns.
Did you really have to announce that in front of our visitors? That's very embarrassing.
As agreed last time, no? Na, saan na pamagian niya, di magina, napampangyapuntay mga commending resolutions. Uh, where in fact na haba ka puwak ako gaabot.
We will look for other source.
So, we look for other source, so okay na siya pa dayon. So, di na tong...
As long as this body makes or approve or endorse this commendatory resolution.
Perhaps whoever is the sponsor will, you know, make the, kwan, sacrifice of... Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Okay, sige, thank you.
I don't believe the secretary is saying he will resource, source funds when we have three months to go, Mr. Chair, and our has already announced the closure of our books of accounts in few succeeding days. So, may I just respectfully suggest that in the meantime, we learn two lessons here. One, 200,000 is not enough for the whole year. Number two, in the meantime, we have three more months. If you really want to pass a commendatory resolution, the 800 pesos bill should go to the sponsor. So, in fact, I told the Honorable NCI IP mandatory representative that I will be paying for that commendatory resolution, 800, as a support to the IPs.
There you have it, there you have it. Thank you, Honorable Garcia. Mr. Chair? Yes, Honorable Kasinabi and then Honorable Monsanto.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have a scheduled meeting on my committee on the ordinance, two ordinances, pero next na para walay mo ilog. Next Tuesday, October 21. Number one is my authored ordinance regarding the support of Loyongan IP School and the educator summit, para tuloy-tuloy na, at least saraka, kwan, mga participants. I will send the guest to be invited, Mr. Secretary, kaya ako pangilista.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do you have any person in mind?
Yes, wala pa.
Wala pa?
Katugyong, kwan, good nga mga...
Maybe then you umbuts man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Kasinabi, Honorable Monsanto.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like also to request for a schedule with a committee hearing on the Committee on Appropriations. This refers to a proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, amending, yes, the centenarian, the centenarian ordinance, an ordinance amending 2024-076R, Mr. Chair. This is an ordinance amending, because we will be giving, under the amendments, we will be giving 50,000 per year. Oh, yes, for each, 101 na, kato mag 101 na.
Until expiration?
Yeah, until expiration, Mr. Chair, until expiration, so... Continuing support.
Continuing support. How many do we have in the entire province?
We have lasted, but before, we have 31. Na, narin nag-expire nga unong 24, pero naikaming at 10 to make it 34. Pero ang hataagan na natos additional, we will be giving this additional incentive on the 24, on the 24 nga maoy nahibilin of the original 100.
Okay.
This will be the subject, Mr. Chair, or the issue to be resolved by the Committee on Appropriations, and I'm also inviting the other members of the Sangguniang to please join.
The 22 million allocation for senior citizens and PWD. We have agreed that we better divide them para alkanse ang mga PWD.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is also a proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, because the budget for the PWD and the senior citizen was lumped. It was lumped in the 30 million. Of the 30 million, only 22 will be given to them, so we have... Thank you for the move of Board Member Garcia for the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, to specifically provide the amount for each of the sector, Mr. Chair. That would also be part of the committee.
Who are you inviting in your proposed committee?
Of course, the Committee on Appropriations and the Committee of Honorable Bing, Honorable Bing Kasinabi, as well as the Committee on Laws, Mr. Chair.
And when will that be held? And where?
Yes, we will be inviting also the PWDO. Budget also, the PDAW. Could we be possibly...
PDAW.
PDAW, the budget also.
Next Tuesday, okay ra?
Okay, okay, 10 o'clock, Mr. Chair, on Tuesday, 14, October 14.
Okay. Mrs. Sekretary, do you have anything else to...
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to inform this August body and thanks for your support. We would like to announce that the Office of the Secretary to the Sangguniang Pandalawigan, with headed by our Presiding Officer, has passed the surveillance audit of ISO 2001-9001 last Friday, Mr. Chair, for the second year, Mr. Chair. So, thank you for your support and your cooperation, Mr. Chair.
Congratulations to the team. We are recertified as an ISO 9001 2015, 2015 certified Sangguniang Pandalawigan. So, congratulations to the team and to the other members for supporting this effort of being a world-class Sangguniang Pandalawigan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, especially for the committees of the Sangguniang Pandalawigan. Second, Mr. Chair, is the letter coming from the PDRC, who announced that, or who informed this body that they will, they are celebrating the National Correctional Consciousness Week on Akoko on October 23 to 24, 2025. So, as usual, Mr. Chair, they are seeking the support from this August body for prices. Yes, Mr. Chair. Okay. So, they will celebrate on October 23 to 24. So, that is all, Mr. Chair, for the secretary's time, and once again, thank you.
Okay, before we end, here's a story by Tony Castle. And the title of the story is "The Value of a Minute", ang importansya sa usakan minuto. When the filleted ocean liner, the Titanic, steamed majestically on her maiden voyage to New York on April 14, 1912, there were more than 2,000 people enjoying the ship's snug comforts. One of the tragic incidents of that night is recalled by the Washington Post. In the wheel room of a uniformed officer was humming at his job as he effortlessly guided the ship at a record-breaking speed. The phone rang. A minute passed, another minute, the officer could not be bothered, he was busy. The third precious minute passed. The officer, his trivial task completed, picked up the phone. This is the lookout at the bow of the ship, iceberg straight ahead, reverse engines, but it was too late. As he rushed to the controls, the pride of the seas crashed into the iceberg amid a deafening roar. Three precious minutes, which could have saved 1,600 lives. Majority Floor?
Thank you, with that, Mr. Chair, I move for the adjournment of our regular session.
The present regular session is hereby adjourned.
And, Mr. Chairman, they have been long-waited for us, Mr. Chair. They are rushed from, coming from the Province of Benguet, Mr. Chairman, the provincial board members. We are, they are here in Bukidnun, Mr. Chair. The Honorable Board Member Johannes Amosan.
Welcome, sir.
The Honorable Board Member Natali B. Kamsol.
Welcome, sir.
The Honorable Board Member Alexander T. Fianza.
Welcome, sir.
And Honorable Board Member Lady Charmaine I. Molintas Licigal.
Welcome, ma'am.
The Honorable Board Member and bespoke person, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Armando I. Lauro.
Welcome, sir.
And also Honorable Board Member Oliver K. Pao.
Welcome, sir.
Then Honorable Board Member Romeo K. Salida.
Salda. Welcome, sir.
And Honorable Board Member Roben El Tindahan.
Welcome, sir.
And also, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable Board Member Tomas K. Wales Junior.
Wales?
Wallace.
Oh, Wallace, ah, okay, I thought that...
And they have also bring the staff, Mr. Chairman, from the Espi Benguet. We have here, Ferber E. Coilan Junior.
Welcome.
Karin B. Ivasco.
Welcome, ma'am.
And Marcelino L. Punipon Junior.
Welcome.
Giselle S. Reyes. Rebecca B. Roque.
Welcome.
Mian B. Salda. Helma B. Sanchez. Carolyn I. Mendoza. And the Attorney General Tan M. Kamsol.
Welcome, Attorney.
And Attorney Clyde K. Watawan.
Welcome, sir.
So, they've been waiting for us, Mr. Chair, until we adjourn. So, I think from the airport of Caga and Deoro, now welcome to Bukidnun. I think this is your second time here, twice, twice already, so, Mr. Chair.
Ah, of the same set of board members?
Ah, only two, okay.
Ah, only two, second time.
Mr. Chairman, I would like also to acknowledge our former board member, and he alone actually went to the Province of Benguet, Mr. Chairman, our former Majority Floor Leader, the former board member Attorney Nimesio Beltran Junior, Mr. Chair.
Our dashing debonair.
He is actually the author of the sisterhood. So... So, may we give time, our secretary, Mr. Chair, Attorney Magualdo?
Yes, but before that, Vice Governor Alexion Felipe S. is replaced by who? Sino na ngayon? Ah, Mary Rose Nepes, okay. He visited us also, yeah, he visited us. Yes, Mrs. Sekretary?
Mr. Chair, may I have also the honor to introduce you to our delegates, Mr. Chair, from the Province of Bukidnun. Mr. Chair, to our delegates, may I introduce to you our Vice Governor and Presiding Officer of this 28th ESP, Honorable Vice Governor Clyde D. Kinu. We have also our Majority Floor Leader and Chairman of the Committee on Rules and Privileges, as well as Chairman on Environmental Protection, Climate Change, and Disaster Preparedness, Honorable Board Member Joseph D. Palmada, Tapanas, Call of Nature Park. We have also the Honorable Board Member Oliver O. N. Garcia, the Chairman of Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights, as well as Chairman of the Committee on Engineering and Public Works and Committee on Peace and Order. We have also Honorable Board Member Minerva C. Kasinabi, Chairman of the Committee on Poverty, alleviation, and Social Reform, as well as Committee on Education and Committee on Women's and Family Relations. We have, I wanted the Majority Floor Leader, ganina, I'll introduce the Board Member Palmada. We have also Honorable Board Member Gordo Frido I. Balansac. He is the Chairman of the Committee on Barangay and Local Government and currently Chairman ng Liga ng Mga Barangay. We have also Honorable Board Member Ranolfo C. Junior G. Pipito, Chairman on Committee on Civil Service and Committee on Health. We have also Honorable Board Member Holy Simon Santo. He is our Chairman on Committee on Appropriation and Chairman of the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability. Likewise, we have Honorable Board Member RB S. Leeser. He is our Chairman of the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous People and currently our IPMR of the Province of Bukidnun. We have also Honorable Board Member Mario Junior B. Albarisi, who is our Chairman of the Committee on Games and Amusement and Committee on Labor and Manpower and Development. We have also Honorable Board Member Elisa I. Unahon, our Chairman of the Committee on Public Services and Transportation. Likewise, we have Honorable Board Member Marlon Brando B. Dinlayan, who is the Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means and Trade and Industry, as well as Chairman of the Committee on Beautification and Tourism. We have also Honorable Board Member Bobby J. B. Dinlayan, who is the Chairman of the Committee on Land Use and Human Settlement, Agrarian Reform, as well as Chairman of the Committee on Special Investigation Committee. Agrarian Reform, as well as Chairman of the Committee on Special Investigation Committee. We have our Chairman, also our Board Member Ria Loestina, Chairman of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development. At the same time, our ISP Federation President of the Province of Bukitnon. We have also our Honorable Board Member Jose Miguel Esportiz, our Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture and Cooperatives. We have also our Honorable Board Member Armando Evangelista, our Philippine Councilor League President of the Province of Bukitnon. And again, acknowledging our former board member and longtime Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Nimitio Beltran, who is the author of the resolution filed in this August body during the twenty-seventh SP regarding the proposed sisterhood with the province of Benguet.
Yes, may we hear a few words from the author? From the prime mover of this sisterhood or brotherhood, or how would you like to label it? Honorable Beltran?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And to my former colleagues and to the new members of this August body, good afternoon, and thank you very much for the invite. And to our guests from the province of Benguet, Magandang Hapon po sa inyong lahat. Mr. Chair, being the author of the resolution, as you can see on the screen, proposing the forging of a sisterhood or brotherhood relationship or arrangement between the Sangguniang Panalawigan of Province of Bukitnon and the Sangguniang Panalawigan of the Province of Benguet. I purposely went to Benguet in June this year before, as you can see, there's on the picture, Mr. Chair. Sino pa nandito niyo sa nasa picture? Isa, isa lang? Yung nasa picture? Dalawa, okay. Sige. Sandali lang, ah. Alright, so, this is the second time na pumunta ako dyan sa Sangguniang Panalawigan of Benguet. The first time was in twenty-twenty-two. Bumisita ako dyan sa Sangguniang Panalawigan ng Benguet. And then, that was followed by, by that, by the way, during that time, yung, yung, may nakakilala lang sa isang member natin, si Board Member Owen Garcia. Eh, yung Board Member ng Benguet na galing pagkakonsihal, PCL niyo dati, kaya nakikilala niyo si Attorney Garcia, kasi siya yung PCL President namin. So, after that, pumunta yung expedition team, the first expedition team ng Benguet in twenty-twenty-four of June. June ba yun? Ata. And they came here on benchmarking sa agricultural matters, Mr. Chair. Kasi meron tayong communalities with both provinces of communalities. We are both landlocked. Our economies are primarily based on agriculture. And meron din tayong communalities sa kultura at sa turismo. So, siguro kaya yun ang napili ng mga taga-kapatid natin taga-Benguet because of these communalities. Not to mention also the climate, although mas malamig talaga dun sa kanila, pero dito, parang ganun din, ulan din ang ulan dito sa aming probinsya. Kaya lang, mas malamig talaga dun sa Benguet. Mas malamig pa ang Benguet kaysa Baguio. Right now, ang Baguio, nasa sixteen sila almost every day, yung temperature nila. Eh, wanko lang dun sa Benguet, siguro nasa nine or twelve, ganun, ang lamig nila. So, ay, nung pumunta sila rito, right then and there, ay, it crossed my mind that why not? That we should come up with an arrangement of a sisterhood or brotherhood. And parang yung ginagawa ng mga LGU, na merong mga sisterhood arrangement with the other LGUs. nga lang, sabi ni Secretary Attorney Maguali, maraming requirements ang DILG, pag yung talagang sinunod natin yung formal na sisterhood arrangement with, between LGUs. So, sabi ko, ano lang naman to eh, this is between the Sangguniangs. So, we don't have to follow the requirements, is the specific requirements ng DILG on forging or coming up with sisterhood MOU or MOA or arrangement for that matter. So, nagtaka ako kasi pinasa natin yung resolution natin right after nandito yung, yung first expedition team. Almost one year had passed, wala pang reply coming from them, and my term was ending already. So, sabi ko, this is an unfinished business on my part. So, I have to go back there in Benguet. Of course, kasama na yung Baguio doon. So, tinanong ko, yung nasa picture, Mick, balik natin yung picture. So, nakapunta ako doon on June nine, Monday yung session niyo, or Tuesday? Mondays, so, June nine ito. Ito ang nasa picture nito, this was on June nine. Pagdating ko dyan, katatapos lang ng session ng, ng previous Sangguniang. So, yung na, ito yung tumanggap ng copy ng resolution natin proposing for the establishment of the sisterhood, ay, nandito si, talagang kamukhang kamukha ni Board Member, ano ni Board Member? Ah, okay. Kasi, maalala ko nun yung, ano niyo, yung spokesperson niyo, si Attorney Casaro? Nasaro, o last termer, pero mas guapo daw sila. Apat yung naging last termer niyo ata, di ba? Apat? So, dalawa na lang natira sa original nila na expedition team of twenty-twenty-four. So, this is the second time that they came back. So, malaking karangalan to sa ating probinsya, ang mga kagalanggalang na miyembro ng Sangguniang Panalawigan ng Bukitnon. Kasi, for the second time, pinili lang pumunta uli rito. Parang ako, dalawang beses na rin akong pumunta sa Benguet, sila din, pangalawang beses na rin lang pumunta rito. So, nararapat lang, na talagang dapat meron tayong sisterhood agreement or MOU, MOA, or arrangement with the Sangguniang Panalawigan of Benguet. So, yan po ang backgrounder po niyan, Mr. Chair. I understand, bago na ang komposisyon ng Sangguniang Panalawigan of Benguet, but I am hoping na matutuloy din 'tong arrangement because this is unprecedented in the sense that mukhang wala pang mga Sangguniang na nagasimula ng ganito. It's always the LGUs, mga cities, towns, na nagpuports ng such kind of arrangements. So, I hope, Mr. Chair, this will materialize. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your effort, Honorable Beltran. None of this would be possible if not for your untiring effort. So, I think we better move fast, no? Or otherwise, we'll be overtaken by the next election. Baka, but if, while, while andito pa yung dalawa na board members nila, di ba? So, we better move fast. Yes, from the province of Benguet, the Sangguniang Panalawigan, anyone would like to? Yes, sir?
Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Board.
Chairman, it's a privilege to be here with my companions, my entourage. And again, yes, dalawa lang pumunta noon, pero ngayon, we are nine and ten staff, para sigurado makabalik kami. Baka may maiwan dito. And anyway, the, yung apat is, ah, yung tatlo is re-elected in the presence of Board Member Kamsol, siya yung nasa doon, Board Member Kamsol. And Attorney Amosan is a minor by profession also. And also, Board Member Paus, he is the Chairman ng mga barangay captain. Inaalagan natin kasi magagaling maboto natin pag twenty-twenty-eight. And of course, Lady Charmaine, our lady na, lady nga, eh, lady rin ang pangalan niya, former daughter of our Governor before, Molintas. And of course, the five new, and Apo Alexander, ang pinakamayaman na Board Member namin. He is a runner by profession, but pinakamayaman kasi appropriation eh. Siya ang taga-pirma ng pira natin. And the remaining five are new entry. We are all former mayors, all three termers, and all recipient of Seal of Good Governance. And the person of our Latrindad, our capital town of Latrindad, Apo Salda. And our, isong, niyo, nawawala yung isang mayor? Apo Wallace. Napansin ko dito, pagpunta namin dito, yung mga ibang bayan niyo palais, nakapangalan sa mga foreigners, Fortit, Siapa yun? Saka Don Carlos, kaya sabi ko, meron kong isang bayan din doon. Siguro pangangalarin namin niyang Tom Wales para,
Yan, para.
Original pangalan is Tomas Wallace. And of course, our own head dito sa delegation, the Chairman of the Tourism, Apo Armando Lauro. He is a model by profession. And yours truly, a Board Member also. And this is not the first time, I think, that delegation from the province came. In nineteen-seventy-seven, or nineteen-seventies or eighties, my father as a mayor came here with a delegation who are the pioneers na pumunta dito and to start and migrate, oo. Some came back because of the malaria, hindi yata nakayanan. Pero ang iba, nandito pa, kaya yun ang hahanapin namin, baka relatives ko kayo. Eh, yun ang sabi ko na baka may maiwan na Board, baka tatakbo dito, ng ano. And anyway, thank you very much for having us. And as I said, I would like to rekindle the relationship that you have started. Again, may history na tayo dito sa Bukitnon. And we have similarity, as mentioned by sir, the proponent of this sisterhood. Sabi nga, bago ngayon, kung ayaw ng DILG, motherhood na lang para mas magandang. And anyway, aside from being, we have, I believe that you have seven tribes here in Bukitnon. In the province of Benguet also, we have three main tribes, so, kana-ivalo yun kalayangang, and two sub-tribe. And all of us are natives. The city which you are speaking of, Baguio City, is in the middle, in the heart of Benguet. So, chartered yun, kaya sipareit lang. And yes, we are the colist, the temperature namin, sometimes, mayroon kaming icicle doon during December in natural. Kaya pagpunta niyo doon, is malaki yung aircon namin doon, lahat.
Centralized.
Being a first-timer also, ngayon, we, the similarities, may yung mga winding roads yun niyo, December, the mountains. Ngayon lang kami nakakain ng tuna sa ibang-ibang luto, so, maganda rin yun, na-experience yun namin. And so forth, so, I think that this sisterhood, in behalf of the Governor, who also expresses intention and the Vice Governor to post through with this sisterhood, kaya kami landitoren in the leadership of our Tourism Chairman, Apo Armando Lauro. So, thank you for receiving us. I hope that we have a good banter and relationship for the upliftment of our two provinceses. We are also first-class and ICO na pa kayo, congratulation.
Thank you, sir.
May manbi-bi marking kami. But unfortunately, Apo Board, wala na kayong plaki ngayon, naring yun naman, wala na silang pundu. And anyway, thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you.
Hey, call on our Chairman, Lauro, you have anything to say? Our bit?
Yes, thank you very much, thank you. Dagang salamat sa mainitong pagdawat sa amin.
O, isa pa yan?
To the Honorable Chairman and to the members of this August body of Provincial Sangguniang Panalawigan Bukitnon, with your Governor Roque. Sin through, as already enunciated by our colleague, Board Member Tindahan, we're representing, of course, the Province of Benguet, one of the colist municipality province in the Philippines. Headed by the good Governor, Dr. Milton de Class, together with our mother of the Sangguniang, twelve Sangguniang Panalawigan, Vice Governor Mirros Fongwan Kipes, with, of course, our fellow workers. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman, sa pagka-iso ng inyong probinsya, Sangguniang Panalawigan. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Our big salute, hindi po kami nagkamalin na pumunta rito, aside from having lunch with, at tuna, tuna. Nakita po namin, addition time to the good Vice Governor. May kamukha ka si sa amin, kaya sabi niyang isang kasama namin, mukhang kamukha ng, taring kasama namin, Sangguniang Panalawigan. Si Board Member Manny, Manny Fermin.
Fermin?
Ah, Fermin, pero late na.
Oh!
Pero parang naribay po sa amin, kaya, ikaw nga, he's the member of Tourism Committee. With the member of Tourism Committee, as enunciated already, thank you very much to the former Board Member Attorney, Nimitio Beltran. Thank you very much. Kaya, nakita ko, medyo guapo ka, pero, kailangan magsok na ako. Ganun po kami, ganun po ang turismo sa amin, on agricultureism, as mentioned by Board Member Tindan. Na may mga kababayan po kami dito sa Bukitnon. Kaya, we are here, not just for a sisterhood, but of course, for a fellowship with you. Because we are now having this support for our MCMO agricultureism, that we know it will ignite, of course, and refresh the first expedition who came here last year with the four members still around, with the new members of the twelve Sangguniang today. And kami po, ay, andito para po, gusto po namin na bigyan ng buhay yung inumpisahan, na-refer po sa amin committee. Sabi namin, mas gusto po namin, and this was even given to us a blessing from the good Governor. Sabi niya, punta kayo sa Bukitnon. Invite nyo sila, thus, in behalf of the Province of Benguet, we are extending our invitation to you, Mr. Chair, and to the whole community of Bukitnon. During our Adivai camps, November twenty-two and twenty-three, that is our Adivai festival in the Province of Benguet. We welcome you. And the good Governor Province said that yung signing na lang siguro kung may festival sa Bukitnon. Kaya gusto po namin, babalik-balik po kami dito. Hindi dahil sa tuna, pero yung mainit na pagwelcome you sa amin. Again, maraming salamat po, sa may komas isiyos, imambantay, sungsikay namin, sungsikatidyo, gawig-gawis, ya sige-sige po kumain agut ako. Para barang atikkankanay, ikan ilokanot yung anailawan, kakakailan me. Andito po kami, galing po sa Provincia ng Benguet, Region Card. Maraming salamat po, again, dagang salamat po sa inyong lahat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, you're very much welcome. And before, siguro before the signing and the kaamulan, no? I think it would be best to be able to visit them first because it's only Board Member Beltran who babalik-balik dun. Yes, Honorable Garcia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Ah, yes, yes, go ahead, sir.
May additional lang, nung mayor ako sa three that we have the sisterhood Kabanglasan with Mayor Dorita Omshuma.
Omshuma, yeah.
And of course, two thousand ten, we have another mayor. And of course, 2010, we have another mayor, Mayor Galwan, we have a sisterhood, Valencia City. Atsaka andito po si Doctor Edwin Balaki, Professor for Binguet State University. Siya po anakwanang strawberry dito sa Bukit nun, oh, introduce ng strawberry. So I think we have plenty of kababayan dito who stayed here. So 'yun po ang isang gusto namin na... Sa Valencia, maraming taga trade at taga Binguet. Abu Dilis at saka Lawian, Lawian. Atsaka... Laruan.
Laruan.
And andito sila sa... I call up Mr. Edwin Balaki, but he's now in Cotapato. So hope and pray that we will be having the signing of agreement of agreement. Siguro we'll be inviting you on our Adivai Festival on November. If... 22 to the whole month of November. Kailan ang main is 23.
When? When? November 22. What is that festival, sir?
Adivai Festival.
Adilay. 'Yung Palagbenga sa...
Sa Baguio po 'yun.
Ah, sa Baguio.
Baguio po.
That's February. Okay, so we will visit both, 'yung sabi ni Sir atsaka ano, Palagbenga.
Palagbenga, February.
'Yung mga Lamiiing, sir, ano ba 'yun, mga taga Binguet or ifugao, Lamiiing? 'Yung mga piliaduna Lamiiing.
Pang-pong province at... Ang... Ang kuwanang sa Binguet, Ibaloi, Kanay atsaka Kalanguya. Adivai Festival is entire province po. We have 13 municipalities attending this Adivai Festival. Celebration.
Adilay Festival?
Adivai.
Adivai?
Festival.
Adivai Festival. What does it celebrate, sir?
Together.
What does it celebrate? Ah, parang sa dito sa mga kaamulan, amul-amul, getting together, kaamulan. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We look forward to visiting your Adivai Festival. Yes, Honorable Garcia.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, being from Valencia City, Bukit nun, and former PCL President, I confirm that Latrindad, Binguet, and the city of Valencia has a sister-city relationship. We did a kanyaw in Valencia. We did also a kanyaw in Latrindad. That was a... Because there's a lot of Ibaloi in Valencia City. As mentioned, the Abu Dilises of Valencia, the Lawian, I think Kamdas, Kamdas also, Kamdas, and a lot more. They are actually nestled in some parts of Banlag because they are all farmers, vegetable farmers. They started with, actually they introduced the high-value crops in Bukit nun. Our friends from the north, especially Latrindad. And I'm happy to hear that the strawberry was introduced by a professor from the Binguet State U. BSU, gehapuna, no? BSU. We have also a BSU here, Bukit nun State U. So that's why they call it Bukso para hindi daw malito kasi meron pang BSU isa, Batangga State U naman. Atsaka may Bulokan State U pa, tatlo marami na. So welcome, welcome to all the board members of the province of Binguet. We are honored to have you here. I have visited your place many times, many, many times. As PCL President of the province of Bukit nun and National Officer of PCL, I often visit for like holding of the PCL elections in that part of the country as the national supervisor. So I'm happy, Mr. Chair, and supportfully the sisterhood between the province of Bukit nun and the province of Binguet. And I would love to visit again Latrindad-Binguet for the Adivai Festival this come November. So maybe everybody can join all the board members. That will be a very cold time. It will be a nice weather in November in Latrindad, it will be in Latrindad, right? Yes, in Latrindad-Binguet. So again, Mr. Chair, I don't know the process, but we need to draft an agreement. Maybe when they come back in the kaamulan, we sign, but we go first in November.
That's very important.
So thank you. Welcome to all our friends from the province of Binguet.
Yes, okay. For further details, we will discuss it later over in Bean Zone, okay? Bean Zone, yes, yes. Everyone is invited in Bean Zone, no? I think our good secretary has prepared a simple yet sumptuous dinner there. Very cold, yes. You cannot survive. Well, make sure you bring a hoodie, okay? Because... Survive, ganito nga, ice. So, okay, let's have a... Okay, what's the protocol, officer? Risa.
Good afternoon, Vice Gov. If I may, Mr. Chair. At this point, may we proceed to have our photo taken and to present our token of gratitude to our delegates?
Yes.
May I request our provincial Vice Governor to be in front, together with Honorable Roben L. Tindaan, sir? For being the senior board member, sir? And may I request our secretary to the Sangguniyang Panlalawigan to present our token? If I may, a little background for the token and lay. The panika in your lay. Panika refers to a traditional large fan like headdress worn by indigenous women, particularly during ceremonies and festivities. Made from native materials, the panika is a significant cultural symbol. It represents the integrity and sacred responsibility of women within their respective tribes to preserve their cultural heritage. For the token, inside is the Bukit nun's line of bean-to-bar chocolates is the delicious embodiment of a farm-to-finish integrity. Made exclusively from adlaos beans, each bar proudly wears its Bukit nun identity. Every Bukit nun bar tells a tale through a taste. It begins with a hint of bitterness, assertive but not overpowering. Then come the earthy and naughty undertones, subtle and layered, the kind that melts seamlessly on your tongue. And at this juncture, may I request the 28 SP, 28 SP board members, as well as the board members from... Yes, as well as the board members from Binguet, province of Binguet, to be in front, sir? And Attorney June Beltran, the proponent of the resolution. May I request the two august body to be in front? Yes, together with the board members, the two august body from Bukit, province of Bukit nun and province of Binguet, sir? And may I present, and may I request our secretary to these and the assurets to present the tokens, please? Tokens from Bukit nun. Inside our token, since Bukit nun is known for its pineapple, we included a zesty delight. Pineapple products from Paula's Bukit nun delights, a tart and pineapple jam. And please remain, please remain po, the province of Binguet wants to...
The province of Binguet would like also to give a simple token, which are the products from the province, such as strawberry jam preserved. We also have veggie chips, the endy taro chips. Hope you'll enjoy it.
A token from the province of Binguet and an update. Sound check. May I request the honorables, the two august body to be closer lang po tayo. Side view lang po ang iba para magkasya po tayo sa camera. Say cheese. And a little announcement from Mr. Christopher. Our dinner po will be at Loizas, together with the two august body from the province of Bukit nun and province of Binguet. That Loizas po, yes. Thank you so much, 28 SP and the 12 SP from the province of Binguet. By the way, we also have a token prepared for the legislative staff of the province of Binguet. It will be distributed by our assurets. Sir? Mr. Chair? Vice Go? Sir? Sir, there's a special request from the legislative staff of Binguet. They want to have a photo taken with you. Please remain, Attorney June? Please remain. May I request all the 12 legislative staff, legislative staff to be in front with your token, please? Delete staff lang. Niawat na.
Hello, Attorney Apollo and board member Palomayda, the majority floor to join the photo, please. Join dito Attorney, tapad ni Vice Go. Attorney Apollo, please join and the legislative staff. Attorney, dito ka sa baba, kaya hindi ka makita dyan. Some of the taller guys can join, Attorney Apollo up there. Mamjo. Etun.
Thank you so much and see you at Loizas.